Roll call, please.
Yes. Mr. Shi.
Here.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Here.
Ms. Peng. Ms. White.
Here.
Mr. Romano.
Here.
Ms. Anjana Patel. Mr. Lugo.
Here.
Mr. Ronan Patel.
Here.
Mr. Erica.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Opening statement?
Sure. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Public Law 1975, C. 231 Sunshine Law, the Edison Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, place thereof posted in the Board of Education Administrative Office. Composites notice were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Letter.
Okay. So welcome everyone to this beautiful auditorium, Herbert Hoover. So I see the principal standing right there. So the floor is yours. The principal of Herbert Hoover, Mr. McGrath.
So good evening, everybody. I would like to officially welcome everybody to Herbert Hoover Middle School and to this beautiful gymnasium that we are all here to recognize and celebrate. I'd like to welcome the Board of Education, Board President Shi, our superintendent Dr. Aldarelli, all of those who are here in attendance, and all of those watching at home. There's a familiar cliche that nobody cares how much you know until they know how much you care. The space that we are gathered in tonight is a testament to how much our community cares about the students of Herbert Hoover Middle School. Each day, our students gather, learn, eat, and dismiss from this gymnasium. And I know that each one of them senses exactly what this space represents. Thank you to our superintendent, Dr. Aldarelli, to our board president, Mr. Shi, the entire board, those who are serving currently on our board, and those who served prior to make this space a reality. There's a few other people that I'd like to thank, and if I miss anybody, apologies. I'd like to thank Mr. William Colubus, who poured countless hours' energy and frankly was here almost every single day to make sure this space was built. Alongside Mr. Colubus was always Mr. Scott Murphy, the contractors, the laborers, all of those who helped build, oversee, and construct this room, Mr. Toth, Mrs. Bessie, and everybody at the board office that really made sure our students got what they needed and made sure this end result became a reality. Finally, I'd like to thank a very special person who unfortunately couldn't be here with us tonight, and that is Mrs. Betty Ann Menett. She is the facility manager who ensured that the construction of this space never interfered with the daily operation of our school. Without her, none of this would happen. So to all of you, thank you very much. To my right, we have those amazing students that I was just talking about. I'm going to ask Mrs. Malazowski to come up and say a few words about her amazing group. She has grown this program into over 150 students. When she came on board, there was maybe 15. And she's very excited because one of the projects that we're working to get approved is going to be a new space for them taking over our locker room, and hopefully the other locker room will go to artistic students. So anything you want to say about your program? Put you on the spot for a second, and then you guys can perform.
Thank you so much. A little heads up might have been nice, but thank you so much for allowing us to perform for you today. The students that you see in front of you are some of the most dedicated students that we have here at Herbert Hoover Middle School. One of the things I love about Herbert Hoover is that we are really able to allow our students to be a part of everything. So many of the students in front of you are a part of sports, are a part of clubs, are a part of academic teams, many other electives, and they still show up before school rehearsals, after school. In fact, all of these students here found out from me yesterday after school that we had an opportunity to perform here. And from just finding out yesterday, 75, including all of their parents, were able to get them here to be able to perform. So we'd love to start off your meeting for you. I'm going to play a piece called "Finale" by Mozart. Thank you.
Well done, boys and girls. You got a standing ovation from the Board of Education. So thank you, everybody, for making this space possible and for all it brings into the lives of our students. Concert's now over. You can start your board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Beautiful performance. I used to play violin when I was little, but not this good. I played till our high school, and I dropped it. So we're going to have a very brief five-minute break for them to clear out of here, and we're going to resume our regular meeting. Thank you very much. Five minutes. Okay, so we're going to go back to our normal agenda. So the first, you know, I'm going to pass this to Dr. Aldarelli.
Aldarelli. Great. Thank you so much, Board President Shi. Yeah, as part of the annual business of the Board of Education and the Edison Public Schools, we have our annual audit presentation that's going to be conducted by HFA auditors. They're going to talk about their process findings, and then commentary provided by Mr. Toth, when applicable. Gentlemen?
Awesome. Thank you very much, everybody, for having us here. I'm Jerry Conady. I'm a partner at HFA, accountants and advisors. Alongside with me here is James Nemeth, who's a supervisor who is in charge of the day-to-day on the engagement for this year's audit. So we're here to talk about the audit for the year ended June 30, 2024. I'm happy to report that we are filed timely with the state of New Jersey. The state extended the deadline for school districts to January 15, 2025, for those audits. So we were filed timely with the state of New Jersey. I usually refer people to, if you want one or two places to look at in the audit report to get a really good synopsis of what's transpired throughout the year, what's taken place over a number of years, and kind of where the district's at as it moves forward, there's two spots in the audit report. The first is on page one, the letter of transmittal, and the other one is on page 21, which is the management's discussion and analysis. They are unaudited portions of the audit report, but what we do is we go in and we look at those numbers to make sure that they're in agreement with the rest of the financial statements. But it gives a little more color behind the numbers themselves that you see throughout the rest of the audit report. We have an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's the best opinion that we can give. It says that there are no modifications necessary to bring your financial statements into compliance with generally accepted accounting principles. I'm going to turn it over to James to talk about a couple of the numbers, and then I'll kind of wrap up with kind of where we were at, findings and things like that, so.
Good evening, everyone. So I was just going to go over a few of your key fund balances for the year ended June 30, 2024. The district ended the year with about $72.6 million in fund balance. That gets broken up into several different categories as far as your reserves, what's restricted, what's committed. For your capital reserve, you had about $33.5 million sitting there at June 30, 2024. That was a decrease of about $5 million from 2023. You had a lot of capital projects go on through the year. You had a budget withdrawal go on, and then they had to transfer towards year end. Your maintenance reserve stayed the same from 2023 at about $1.3 million. Your emergency reserve also stayed the same at about $1 million, no change from 2023. Your unemployment reserve went up about $50,000 to $681,000. Now your committed section, these are categories that are committed for next year's purposes. You had encumbrances of about $3.3 million for the year ended. You had excess surplus, which is, the state gives us a calculation for how much unassigned or unrestricted fund balance that you can have at the year end. This year, you had $16.9 million in excess surplus, which is going to be required to be used for the '25-'26 budget. You had excess surplus designated for subsequent year expenditures of about $8.6 million. This was last year's excess surplus that is being used in the '24-'25 budget. And you had your unassigned fund balance of about $7.1 million for the year ended June 30, 2024. This unassigned fund balance is the maximum that the district could be at based on a formula the state gives us. It takes into consideration your expenditures, any adjustments that you're allowed to factor into it, and then that $7.1 million is not committed towards any purposes, so it can be used however the district sees fit. I'm going to turn it back over to Jerry.
So it's important to talk about those budget numbers, those fund balance numbers, really, just because, especially as the district starts to put together its fiscal year '25- '26 budget. This way, you're aware of kind of the fund balances that you have available to you. In addition to the rest of our testing on the financial statements themselves, we also have performed additional layer of testing on both your federal and your state grants. It's referred to as a single audit. For your federal grants, we selected the Education Stabilization Fund and the Special Education Cluster. For your state grants, we tested your State Aid Public Cluster. I'm happy to report, last year, we had some findings in regards to the maintenance of the general ledger. We did look and see, and throughout all of our audit procedures, that finding has been corrected and has been removed from the findings and recommendations. We do have one repeat finding, which we're seeing in a lot of our districts ever since a lot of the COVID funding, and that's net cash resources in the Food Service Fund. There's statutory calculations that the Department of Agriculture sets forth as far as how much net cash resources you can have on hand at year end. The district exceeded those amounts, so really, it's just coming up with a plan to make sure to spend those monies down. Again, it's very common. We're seeing it in a lot of our school districts with all the COVID funding that was provided to the Food Service Fund. I just want to give, I want to turn it over to questions, too, in case the board has any, but before I do, I just want to give a huge thank you to Mr. Toth, Ms. Becky, and Dr. Aldarelli for your guys' staff, and all the courtesies extended to James and myself and our entire team. My wife is an accountant, so I get to hear the names that were called at my own house, and I know what a disruption we are, asking for a lot of additional documents in addition to your day-to-day responsibility. So I just want to thank you guys very much for all the courtesies extended to us. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, if you guys have any.
Dr. Ray, or Jerry? Last year and the year before, there was discrepancies. This year, we're finding out that there are basically none. That's a testament to John Toth and his people that are doing a better job than when we first started. I was on the board three years. This will be my third year. When we have an audit that comes back clean, and I'm saying it's clean, it makes me know that the superintendent and the BA and their administrative team is doing the right thing. So thank you for keeping your eyes on them. I know that they appreciate somebody looking over their shoulder. So thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for letting the township know that we're doing the right thing. We have a management team, the Board of Ed, not the body that's sitting on the dais, but we have a management team that are doing the right thing. I go into their office, and they're always, they're constantly moving, constantly busy. So I appreciate you keep an eye on them, and I appreciate you keep an eye on John Toth. Hey, JT? Buddy? Okay. So thank you very much for your time. Thank you, Jerry. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I just want to reiterate, you know, it's glad, I'm glad that all the findings are gone. The one that's remaining is a good finding. Okay? So I just want to remind everyone that, you know, many years ago, we don't have that much money. And since we switched to food vendor, we have, the participation rate has gone up. And every year, the participation rate gone up. It's a win-win for both sides, and the end result is we have this surplus. Of course, we need to find a way to spend them, but there are limited ways to spend these. It's only, you know, food or kitchen or those things related. But I'm pretty sure with all the expansions we have, we'll find a good use of that. So it's a good finding. It's, you know, what the board has done in the past of switching the food vendors, and we're getting this extra fund. And the good thing is we see more and more students participating in the lunch program. So thank you very much, and see you next year.
Thank you very much.
All right?
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shi. Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, as with all of the board meetings, our action meetings, we have our presentation, our update to the board on our strategic planning process. Last month, we had Portrait of the Graduate, and this month, we have Programs, Pathways, and Proficiencies, which is the roadmap on how to get to that final year here in Edison Township and a portrait of our graduate. It gives me a great pleasure to introduce our chief academic officer for elementary, Ms. Goomer, as well.
Thank you, Board of Education, Mr. Shi, Dr. Aldarelli. I think we got the best pillar out of all of them. This pillar has been one that has re-energized us, our staff, our administrators, as we kind of consider the big question of how to get rid of that question that you get at home all the time, and I know you get it, and everyone in the audience gets it, too. Why do I have to learn this? So this is going to solve that question. You will not hear it again, hopefully, in five years. That is the goal. So I wanted to just say that we were very lucky to have a very diverse group of people on our committee. We all came with different backgrounds. Even if we were in education now, some of us had done other things before. And what was kind of common amongst all of us is that some of us had winding roads to get to where we were. And some of us were a little regretful about the roads we didn't take or we didn't know about. And what happened was, we came to consensus that one of the things that we want to make sure we provide to our students is this idea of knowledge of careers, of what they might want to get into. So coupled with the idea of why do I need to learn this, and this idea of what career could I do, is where this went. Personally, I found out in my 30s that one of my father's colleagues, her husband, was someone who worked for Trident Gum and came up with new flavors of gum, and I just thought, I would have loved to have made a gum that tasted like Bonnie Booty or Rust Meli or something like that, because there isn't any out there. But who knew that that existed? So we're hoping to expose our students to those kinds of things that are out there. We focused on three main goals. We split it up into three kind of areas, very specifically so that we could build upon experiences that kids had in elementary. So your primary goal here is about elementary school and exposing students to careers, and then the same again in our goal for, our second goal for middle school, and again for our goal for third, our third goal for high school. The interesting about thing and very exciting thing about high school is that it's really going to turn into academies and current and technical education, which you'll hear a little bit more about further on. I want to say as well, one of the things that I'm very excited about is that in all my time here, this might be the first time that we're really making a concerted effort to do something K through 12, which is super exciting. There's a ribbon that's going to flow all the way through every grade level. So in elementary school, we're already excited, that we're already well on our way to kind of fulfilling this goal. We are already looking at our curriculum and social studies to see where we can incorporate natural connections, as we are doing in science as well. One of the other things that we want to do is in our, create a summer exploration program, and we're going to start incorporating careers into some of our coursework in the summer enrichment program this coming summer, which is very exciting. We've already started considering how we can extend science time in our schedule in elementaries. We know that we need to do more hands-on experimentation. I've been going around to buildings recently and talking to the students, and they all say the same thing. We want more hands-on experiments, because that's where we learn. And we know that, and that's what's going to be needed for the future, anyway. We've also added, as you may have heard before, critical thinking units that are, some of our teachers go in and push in and do these already with our teachers, and we're planning on expanding that even more so. So the last piece of this, of course, is, as I said, this is a ribbon going through K through 12. So as we consider what the students might need to know in order to head into middle school, we're hoping to at some point create an elective fair for students to know what they want to take in middle school as their path may begin as they get into CTEs or academies. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Halpin.
Good evening, everyone. For those of you that don't know me, my name's Nicole. I am the 612 CTE supervisor, and CTE is career, and thank you, short girl problems, career and technical education. People ask me if I was nervous to talk tonight, and you can't be nervous to talk about something that you truly feel passionate and care about. So I'm really excited to kind of show you what that 612 piece is going to look like, and then also highlight what we're actually already doing. Sometimes I talk to parents and community members, and they're like, what? You already have a class like that? And the answer is yes. So that's sort of my piece of what tonight's going to look like. But focusing on our 6 to 8, I always look at our middle schoolers, and they just are so excited. So how can we bottle that excitement up and give them some sort of career exploration? So the first thing we did this year was I brought the middle school counseling teams up to the high schools, so they could actually see what programs we offer. So when they're helping students pick classes and pick elective programs, they can see the shops. They can see the different electives, and then help our students in the middle school kind of guide them into a path. Continuously in CTE, we bring career awareness. So in cooking, yes, the kids love to cook. They love to make recipes. But what are the different careers in that area that are besides a chef? So we constantly add the different career areas. New electives. We expanded our middle school elective program. We offer STEM, forensic science, public speaking, theater, and we're continuously having those conversations to include more and more areas. And how do we find out what those areas are? We ask the kids. We ask the teachers. And our middle school elective program is blossoming. And our next thing is, just like Menander said, we're looking for middle school opportunities to incorporate for our middle school students. So currently, we offer a summer STEM program. We also offer a esports summer program, and we're going to continue to elaborate on those programs as well. And for our grades nine through 12, this is really exciting work. As Dr. Aldarelli told me, we're going to have the best programs in the state, so that's what we're doing. So we are creating career pathways. And in those career pathways, students are going to be able to have a four-year program where they can take different courses, and there's a why at the end. Why are they doing this? They're going to be able to see that. So right now, we're in the planning phases. When I tell you how excited my teachers were to get their feet wet in this, they're researching, they're calling, they're emailing, they're creating plans for us to meet in the spring so we can roll out these ideas to the community. But to see teachers excited about what they're doing, that's just going to roll right into the classroom. So if teachers are excited, our kids are going to benefit from that. We are in the process of developing partnerships, looking outside at different college credit opportunities, and not just for college, but also certifications, and we're going to talk about that in a minute. The end of pathway. So the whole point of a career pathway is to have an end, have something that you can walk away from besides just taking the class. So looking at those credentials that our students are going to need when they enter the workforce. We're also working on the professional development that our staff is going to need to support those endeavors, and make sure our staff have exactly what they need to be able to support our students. And our first planning session is very exciting. We picked April Fool's Day. I don't know if that's good or bad. But my teachers will be coming together on April 1st for our first big meeting for our curriculum planning and our pathway layout. When I talk about end of pathway, the why, these are some of the companies that we've reached out to or will have meetings with soon to bring into our high schools so that our kids can leave with real-world certifications. We are lucky enough this year, I know some of you have heard it, we are piloting a new AP course at JP Stevens, cybersecurity. Any student that takes that course and gets a certain score on the AP exam is going to have an opportunity, for a free opportunity, to get the Comp TIA Computer Science certification. So we're going to take that, and we're going to roll with that. So these are all the things, and I'm not just the one meeting with these. Again, my staff is meeting with these vendors, so that they're the ones bringing it into the classroom and being able to roll it out. I wanted to share this because, as I've learned as an administrator, it's data, right? Our decisions need to be based on a lot of things, and one of those things needs to be data. So we used to call these soft skills. Now we call them durable skills. That's the new terminology. And when you ask employers what they want and who they're going to hire, they always say, they can teach anyone to do a job, but you can't teach kids or people that durable skill, that X factor, that Y. So we're going to be taking these skill sets that these employers are looking for and making sure they're incorporated into our classes and into the experiences that we're giving our students. So now I'm going to use this time to kind of highlight what we already do. February happens to be Career and Technical Education Month, so it's a really nice, easy fit. These are the areas that fall under Career and Tech Ed, and these are where we're going to be branching off our career pathways from. So many people ask me what we do. This is what we do all day. These are all the courses that we currently offer in the two high schools. It's a lot. I was in five different rooms in JP Stevens, and I went from making a code to cooking soup. And that's what I get to do every day, which is really exciting. But we're already offering so many opportunities, and all we're going to do is take these already offers, funnel them, and then add what we need to do. So the why has been... So the why, as Beninder said, we never want our kids to ask why they're doing this. But these are the different skills that we're going to be looking at. Increase student engagement. We all know when kids like what they're doing, they're engaged and want to do it. Real-world application, career choice, job readiness, college and career connection, equity and access. We're looking for programs that not just our highest, highest, highest achievers can find success in, we want all levels of learners to be able to be successful. And community benefits. When I was at the curriculum committee meeting, we were talking about how great of a place we work in and how many opportunities and resources we're going to have for our community. So we're going to be tapping all of you, all of you, and help us when we, when we need it. So get ready for that. So without facilities, we don't have programs. I'm really proud to say that we are one of the only traditional high schools that have a full functioning auto shop. This is at Edison High School. Some people don't even know it exists, so I wanted to make sure that we saw that. These are our kids every day. They're working. Actually, the picture on the right is my car getting the oil changed. So I trust them enough to change my oil. Our teacher, Mr. Anichi, is standout. He has kids doing, thinking, learning. And that's what the facilities that we need for. I figured I would highlight our brand-new Hoover kitchen since we're at Hoover. This happened this summer. So we're taking our traditional family consumer science courses and making them hands-on, right? So this is the kitchen that the kids here cook in every day. They're doing, they're doing high-level, high-level stuff. And our teacher here worked in the industry for 20 years, Chef D. So that's the kind of knowledge these kids are gaining. And then this was our last project that we've done. This is our new robotics room at JP Stevens. So this is something that we're really proud of with all the different elements that it brought in. So I want to thank the facilities and I want to thank you all for making sure that you support all the pieces of the program because without our facilities, we don't have programs. I just also want to highlight the wooden cabinets on the top and the left. Those were actually made from our construction technology class down the hall. So our kids are making the furniture for the classrooms as a project. I mean, you can't get any more real-world than that. And then here's our kids. Here's our kids doing, learning, thinking. Our robotics team, our cooking, our bridge-building competition. The top right is our preschool program with our littles. Any of you that have ever been in the high school with our little kids, they're the best. Our wood shop program, again, auto shop. And then these are just some other, other projects that we've worked on. The one in the, the end at the bottom, that was a food truck project that we did at Edison High School. So our business teacher had the kids create food trucks. And then our culinary arts teachers, the kids made the food for the food truck. So these are all the things we're going to start doing, connecting all the different elements and all the different areas. Again, it's CTE month, so I wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to highlight our programs. This was actually a banner that's made by one of our JP Stevens teachers, Ms. May, that highlights all of our programs. I also just want to take this opportunity to thank my teachers. They work really hard and anytime that I can say that in a public forum, I want to appreciate that. With these programs also comes the extracurriculars. So you'll see on the agenda, you're approving some field trips today for our DECA students and our FCCLA students. I thank you for the support on that. And the best way to know about those programs is to hear it from our students. So we're lucky enough today to have a few FCCLA students who just want to share their experience through Career and Tech Ed Month. Beninder and I thank you for today and we're looking forward to having your support and seeing where our pathways lead. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Halpin. Good evening, everyone. My name is Malav Shah and I'm currently a senior at John P. Stevens. And I'm also serving as a state president of the New Jersey Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, in addition to the co-president of the JP Stevens FCCLA chapter. I stand before you today with great enthusiasm and pride as a representative of FCCLA, especially as we celebrate our organization, among others, as part of Career and Technical Education Month. The lifelong lessons, meaningful friendships, and durable skills are definitely worth celebrating this month and every month of the year, especially for the purpose it has brought for students much like myself. Our life-changing transformative organization helps those like me find a place to belong and gives them a purpose to serve their community, be more active in their career search process, and learn ways to improve their home life. For me, it has been the best learning experience. Since FCCLA is co-curricular, I have been able to take the knowledge I learned in my culinary class and apply it to my competitive events and initiatives that we do both locally and statewide. So I've experienced firsthand the character development that FCCLA provides. This could not have been possible without getting that extra step and taking a step out of my comfort zone. And I can assure you, if I had not done that, I would not be the state president of a 4,000 student body today. And which is why I want to recognize the amazing opportunities that FCCLA has to offer. Thank you for your time and once again, happy Career and Technical Education Month.
Good evening. My name is Srithar Ghar, a junior at JP Stevens High School, currently serving as a New Jersey FCCLA vice president of programs. I've been a member of FCCLA for six years and they've been some of the most impactful years of my life. FCCLA and FCS education has not only taught me the importance of soft skills, but also the impact of service and the importance of 21st century skills in fields such as personal finance and culinary arts. FCCLA is one of the eight career and technical student organizations nationally recognized by the Board of Education. The ultimate goal for FCCLA is to help all students succeed, whether in any endeavor they may choose. Hence the name, Family, Career, Community Leaders of America. However, this will be impossible without the fundamental role of family and consumer sciences, a core aspect to all career and technical education. From personal finance, textile merchandising, early childhood education, and holistic wellness, the framework of FCS education shaped FCCLA we know and love today. All of these skills not only benefit me, but fellow FCCLA members in our college and career lives. CTE month is an important time for FCS advocacy and FCCLA truly appreciates the support of the Board of Education. Thank you.
Good evening, once again. My name is Stuti Shah and I'm currently a senior at Edison High School. I currently serve as the New Jersey Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America First Vice President. Today, I'm excited to expand upon my fellow officers' points about our amazing organization, FCCLA. In New Jersey, we have three conference opportunities for our members. Our Fall Leadership Connection, Virtual Leadership Bootcamp, and our State Leadership Conference in the Spring. All of these conferences, in-person and virtual, have community service opportunities for our members. Community service is an integral part of FCCLA, allowing members to build skills in ethical decision-making, servant leadership, and expand upon their knowledge and the main parts of their communities. Along with enhancing my time management and college and career-ready skills, FCCLA has allowed me to immerse myself within many communities across our country through service initiatives. From local initiatives like collecting pull tabs for the Ronald McDonald House and cans for replenished food pantry, to collecting monetary donations for the California wildfires, I've been able to learn about different issues in our country and ways that students like myself can address them. In addition, our recent virtual global free rice initiative has allowed over 300 members in our state to participate in global service from the comfort of their homes. FCCLA has truly shaped my leadership journey, equipping me with invaluable skills and meaningful service experiences that extend beyond the classroom and into communities across the country. If you are interested in learning more about our spring service initiatives, please look at attending the 2025 State Leadership Conference in Cherry Hill, New Jersey, or looking at the NJFCCLA website, NJFCCLA.org. Thank you for celebrating Career and Technical Education Month with us.
A great presentation. And we wanted, you know, the program and pathways, this is something that we want to do. I think we talked about the STEM is already one of the pathways. There are more pathways coming. We're planning for computer, AI, cybersecurity slash computer science. We're looking for business. And the other one's allied house. Whoever wants to get into the medical fields, doctors or nurses, that's another pathway. So, you know, we hope that in September, some of the pathways will be in place. So we hope that we have these criterias be set up so we can get these things going in September. So no pressure on you, but I will hope to see that we'll have some good news to report in, in future meetings. I'm pretty sure the curriculum committee is working hard with the supervisors on this. So let's see what we can have for the pathways. Hopefully have all of them in September. Thank you very much and great presentations for all the students. All right. So I'm not going to give you a pressure, otherwise, you know. Okay. All right. So, okay. President's Report. Today I saw a lot of my sons, my, my daughter's teachers here and some of the people that I, I saw for a lot of the performances. Today we have the honor of naming the new JP Stevens Auditorium to Andrew Dinacola Arts Auditorium. Dean has been... I, I had the firsthand experience with Dean because I have two kids, both of them were in his program, four years. So it's like seven years altogether. I know him firsthand. He's a great educator. He, you know, pushes the kids, but he gets the best of the students. He, he wants them to, you know, reach their, the best potentials. Some, some of the kids at the very beginning say, oh, he's too tough. But the end of the day, when they graduate, they all love him. That is educator we want. Fifty years put into their life in the education. Well-deserved. We're very, very happy that we can, able, we are able to do this in his honor. So there will be a resolution coming up for that. So stay tuned.
So Superintendent's Report.
Thank you so much, Mr. Shi. I echo the sentiments of Mr. Shi. What a fabulous presentation all around. Mr. McGrath, thank you so much. What a wonderful way to open a board meeting with not only celebrating this wonderful space, but also the student performance. Anytime you have the opportunity to get in schools and watch students interact with their teachers, perform on, perform tasks that are interesting to them, it really just resonates with all the educators in the room. And that, that actually coincides with, it is February 24th through the 28th, I believe, is National Public Schools Week. And I had the opportunity to get into some unbelievable classrooms this week. I was over at Edison High School as well as Thomas Jefferson, watching some really, really amazing things go on. You know, evidence of personalized learning, students on workings, students working on problems that are interesting to them, teachers using data to drive instructional practices. I actually reached out to them today just to commend them for their work. And we're looking to expand these practices district-wide, so I applaud them and I applaud the team that leads them in that capacity, too. It really, it's the best part of my job, getting into schools. We do have two resolutions on the agenda this evening for two individuals that have made a huge impact here at Edison Township, Mr. Dinacola and Mr. Russell. We will be honoring them separately at future board meetings with the opening of the JP Stevens Auditorium, as well as Teacher Recognition Month in May and June. So we're going to have some, a special presentation at that time. If you had the opportunity to get here a little bit early, you saw some construction going on. We've got a, we've got some construction going on. If you haven't heard, it is the JP Stevens Auditorium, which is moving a little bit behind schedule, but we're, we're, we're right in the ship currently, right now, as well as that 30-classroom addition, which will be set to open September 1st and hopefully completion by the end of June this year. So we are really proud of the work that this board has done in supporting those, those expansion projects. And, you know, the, the greatest part is when we're going to open it and see the kids' faces when they're looking at their, their brand-new space. It is budget season. The governor gave his budget address today. Mr. Toth, as well as all departments, have been hard at work, making sure we are presenting a budget that is not only financially responsible, but also reflective of the goals, mission, and vision of the Edison Township Public Schools. This is a team effort, our building-level principals, our administration, our supervisors, our department heads, everybody in the business office have done a wonderful job in constructing this budget and I do thank them for their efforts. Another team effort, which is also on the agenda, which is something I have like anxiety over, once January comes and that's the school calendar. I, I'm fortunate enough to have a really good team around me. Mr. Revnik, thank you so much for the multiple calendars that you and your organization have provided. They are great sounding boards as well. Mr. Ross, always critical feedback and, and I do appreciate that. And my central office team, too, that did a really nice job of kind of, you know, not only vetting those pieces, weighing the positives and negatives of each calendar. I think we put a, a pretty good one forward. We did prioritize getting out of school a little bit earlier. You know, it, those summer months get really, really hot, especially, you know, on the second floor of some of our buildings right now. And, you know, hopefully we are looking at the same type of weather next year as we are this year. If things hold up, and I do want to knock on wood, we do have a few built-in snow days that are at our availability that as long as all goes well within the next couple of weeks, we'll be getting correspondence to the community that we will have those days off. And last but not least, I do want to thank the Board of Education. Youth Art Month is something that this board has always supported. The arts in our school are nationally recognized as evidenced by today's performance. And your continued support for, you know, the extracurriculars and the co-curriculars goes a long way. And I know I speak on behalf of all members of our staff in that capacity. And that will sum up my report, Mr. Shi.
Thank you. Now we have the two student council presidents. Derek, you go first.
Hey, everyone. To start off, this past Friday, we hosted our annual dodgeball for charity event. The tournament, the tournament was formatted like the four nations face-off that hockey just had with different pools where teams were, that teams were put into to start. And then we had a, a six-team final bracket where the team with a questionable name, I'm not going to say, but that team, they had Justin and Gavin Poslet, Stephen and Dylan Labrizzi, Raymond Tavares, and Emmanuel Akimbo. They walked out to Black Sabbath's Ironman in the championship, ended up taking home the hardware. In athletics, our winter sports are somehow already nearing their ends. The boys' basketball team almost doubled their win total from last year, led by first-team All-Blue Division Ballers Senior Dejra Carvey and Junior Diraj Samparaboyina. The team finished second in the division with some notable wins, including a 51-35 rout over the Hawks, as well as a close win against Gold Division winner Middlesex. They have their first, they have their first game in the state playoffs this Saturday, this, this Thursday, sorry, at Sayerville, so come out to watch the boys keep their comeback season going. Their girls' basketball team has also been pretty successful as they have a record of 17 and 10, sitting third place in the White Division. Freshmen Carmella Arana and Senior Olivia Smart continue to lead the way, with the latter of those two leading the team in points, rebounds, and blocks in her final year. They have two wins over Woodbridge within those 17 and have kept up a pattern with the boys' basketball team with two wins over the Northside Squad. The girls' team has their first, first round state playoff game at the same time as the boys, except they'll be home against Hearn and Central. On the track team, David Brown and Amma Boateng are state champions in the high jump. And on the wrestling team, Fernando Avalon has launched his second GMC wrestling title, already putting him among the great wrestlers in EHS history. The girls' bowling team went 12 and 7 and just ended their season against a top seed Monroe team, while the boys' bowling team's season just came to an end as well. After being undefeated White Division champions, the, the boys' bowling team took down East Brunswick in the first round of the playoffs and missed the championship by 31 pins, losing only to one of the best teams in the state, Woodbridge. Coming up soon, we're having UNICEF's annual Bad Mitten for Charity event, a ping-pong tournament, the Senior Class Council's March Madness Basketball Tournament, and we're working on setting up a potential Battle of the Classes event in the spring. And that's all I have now for the report. But before I finish, I'd like to, I'd like to read aloud my, a thank you letter I wrote to my football coach at Edison High School, Brian Calantoni. And before I read this letter, I'd like to thank the board for hiring people like, like Coach Cal. There you go. Dear Coach Cal, what are we doing? Receiving routes go from left to right. We're reading our playbook, not the Torah, said Coach Cal. I laughed alone as the joke flew over my teammates' heads. He then noticed my Soundgarden shirt and our shared music taste was understood. I think we both knew from that moment we'd share a special relationship going forward. Joining the football team, I was uncertain of my survival along 200-pounders. Underweight and fresh out of marching band, the threat of being depleted by a zephyr was real. The locker room felt foreign and intimidating. That is, until your inviting nature made me feel at home. I paid forward your benevolence to young players from then on, having experienced your energy's irreplaceable effects firsthand. You never failed to reaffirm my drive. And unlike most coaches, you cared enough to recognize and applaud tenacity and hustle in practice. In addition to everything you did for me on the field, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank you for writing my letter of recommendation. I felt both flattered and humbled as I read your letter, as your words were truly touching. So far, I'm seven for seven in college admissions with Rutgers, Ohio State. So far, I'm seven for seven in college admissions with Rutgers, Ohio State, Maryland, Michigan State, Penn State, Binghamton, and Stony Brook, and have no doubt that your incredible letter influenced some of the admissions officers' decisions. And despite my terrible ability to check and respond to text messages, which I'm working on, I know our relationship will continue into the future regardless of whatever paths our lives continue down. I will, I will be forever thankful to you for getting me onto the field despite a couple of my head-scrashing plays. My top highlights include lining up offsides on my first play on varsity and my other top highlight is celebrating a first down seven yards before the marker. My appreciation for your support, as well as your wisdom about the value of my experiences on the team is immeasurable. My utmost gratitude, Dudek.
Good job, seven on seven. Very impressive.
Thank you.
Wow. So the other thing, you know, I want to say something about Derek, because at the last meeting, I challenged him to go out and get some feedback about the new cell phone policies that Mr. Ross implemented. So he went out, did a survey, and gave me the data. And I have another follow-up for him to, you know, get me more data. So I hope before he graduates, I get that data. All right? So, you know, that's a great point that Derek brought up, is the teachers and the coaches and the advisors, not only develop these students academically, and we also develop them to be good citizens. So this is a perfect example of that. And thank Coach Cal for doing that. We have a lot of, you know, staff that does this, and Andrew Dina Cola is another example. So, thank you. All right? So now let's move on to J.P. Stevens.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sanvi Burigam, and I am one of the two presidents of the Student Council at J.P. Stevens, and I'm excited to share some announcements about our school. The Student Council hosted our annual J.P.S. Family Feud recently, where I dressed up as Steve Harvey, yes, bald cap and mustache and suit and everything, and asked the players several questions in a Family Feud-style event. The senior team emerged as our Family Feud champions. And in a few days, Student Council will also be hosting our annual volleyball tournament, where teams will wear silly costumes, play competitively against one another, eat lots of good food, and fight for a huge Taco Bell gift card. The end of February unfortunately means the end of the season for our winter sports teams, and we cannot be more proud of every single athlete. Some shout-outs for sports who did exceptionally well are Boys Bowling with a twelve-to-six record, Girls Bowling with a fourteen-to-one record, and Girls Basketball, who recently went on a six-game winning streak. On the note of sports, J.P. Stevens also hosted their annual teacher volleyball tournament fundraiser, where each school sent their fiercest teacher athletes to bomb set and spike victory for their school. I'm proud to share that the J.P. Stevens teacher team annihilated the competition, winning a heated final round against John Adams Middle School for the second year in a row and raising lots of money for charity. Besides sports, J.P. hosted a plethora of other events in the past month, including a moving poetry performance contest featuring beautiful and moving poems from our students. Shout-out to the winner, Kriti Agarwal. We are so proud of her and all our other poets. Furthermore, the J.P.S. TEDx Club will also be hosting their annual TEDx conference, featuring inspirational, shocking, and funny speeches from both J.P. students and guest speakers, such as Char V Berg, who was former Miss NJ and first runner-up for Miss America, and Matthew Ferrante, a trailblazing cybersecurity and technology, technology expert. And this will be this Tuesday, so please use the form that was sent to your Edison email address to register for this amazing event. And lastly, the J.P.S. Music Program hosted their annual Bamboozled Night, where students came, students in orchestra, band and orchestra, came together to dance, eat, eat good food, and make everlasting memories. That's all for now, and I'm excited to share more updates with everyone in the future.
Thank you very much. So I hope with the completion of the new auditorium, we're going to have a grand performance of all the, you know, the programs. So I also got to give you a assignment, okay? Because I gave Derek a assignment last, last meeting. You have a new bathroom policy in J.P. Stevens?
Yeah.
All right, can you give me some feedback next meeting? You don't have to do public, you can send me emails, we can talk on the side. I want some direct feedback from the students. All right, thank you very much. Okay, so, you know, we're going to go into our regular resolutions. So if you guys have more homework or whatever, you can feel free to leave, but you can, you can stay here as well if you want. Okay? Thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to open up for public comments for resolutions only. Public comments for resolutions only.
Mr. Shi.
Public comments, yes. Yes?
Good evening. Can everyone hear me okay behind? Because I think some of the comments, I want to make it for the crowd behind me as well as for the board members. My name is Nick Romanitz. I graduated from Edison High School in nineteen ninety-one. I'm sorry, let's try nineteen sixty-one. And the second graduating, I know I don't look that old. But anyway, I graduated from Edison High nineteen sixty-one, the second graduating class. I grew up in the Clara Barton section. I went to Clara Barton School, it's my elementary school. I spent the last four years of high school going on half-day sessions simply because of the number of youngsters in the building and the lack of, number of kids in the school system and the lack of buildings. And that's why there was a dramatic growth of middle schools being built, the high school building up soon after when J.P. came up. And when I got out of the service, I got hired in nineteen seventy-one. And in nineteen seventy-two, I got transferred up to J.P. Stevens to run the driver ed program. Some of you guys may have remembered about that, when there's a lot of federal money floating around to get a simulator, three cars, five guys, taking kids on the road. Back then, I remember taking kids on the road, and we didn't know anything about special ed, but that was good. But I want to tell you some things about Andy that we, you may not know, simply because we know what he has done. You can go and Google Andy's name, and there's a wonderful video, it's about a half hour, about what kind of guy he is and what he meant to the kids. So let me tell you a couple of different things that you probably don't even know. I don't even think Andy's wife and daughters and kids know about this. But I got to know Andy in nineteen seventy-one, when he came over to Woodrow, yeah, Woodrow Wilson. And I see him every Friday at happy hour at the Beef, the Beef Locker, I think it was called, the place that, by Metuchen Country Club. And that's a great place to meet new people, whether, will it be male or female. And Andy and I met each other, we hit it off because I knew some of his relatives were about my age. I'm about nine years older than Andy was. And eventually, we ended up getting a softball team to play slow pitch softball. And Andy was a pretty damn good athlete. He was our slow pitch guy, and he could stand here and put the ball up where the yellow line meets the white, drop it in the zone, and if you didn't hit the darn thing, the umpire would call you out. And then when the ball was hit by somebody, he could field it. But you know what? Andy decided becoming musician, and that's because God had other plans for him. And we're all a benefit for that. Okay. Years ago, when Rutgers didn't have a good football team in the early mid-seventies, somehow they ended up playing Alabama up at the Meadowlands. And we had, oh, you went, huh? I was there.
I remember, yes.
Okay, well, I think that was a seven o'clock game, but we had a bus full of guys from J.P. Stevens. Most of them, coaches, all went up there, did a little tailgating, had a good time. And we get back to the parking lot, we're on the bus, we're counting heads, we're missing two people. Where are they? Well, one was my cousin Scott, and the other was Andy. And it turns out that they jumped on the field, they got escorted off the field by security, they weren't arrested. But Andy was doing stuff that kids do at that age. My cousin now still even runs around, jumping, trying to get on Yankee Stadium after the game. My second year at Stevens, I got a job with the football team. And back in that day, for football and for spring, fall sports, you could not start practice until, God, about the twenty-eighth of August. And then you play your first game, what, three weeks later? It looks like you've been through that, huh? But anyway, I came in one day, about the twenty-eighth of August, football staff came rolling into J.P. to get the gear set up for the kids to come the next day, et cetera, et cetera. And there's all these kids on the field with instruments. So I go over to Andy, what are you doing here? Oh, this is our second week of band practice. You know, we're getting ready for the season. So Andy did a lot of great things that he didn't have to do. As a matter of fact, when Rocky was a popular movie, Andy put a halftime show together with his staff and the kids. And we had a kid from Potters that played Mr. T., is it, I guess? But there would be people at halftime that would not go to the bathroom, or they wouldn't go get anything to eat until after this halftime show is over. And Andy just put some great programs together with his staff that people absolutely loved. A couple of days, if we had played a Friday night or a Saturday afternoon game, hey, Andy, you want to do something on this? No, I can't do that. I'm going to, I'm going to a band tryout, or we're going to a competition, or we're in a parade. And Andy did that stuff all the time. You know, most teachers come to school, they do their thing, they go home. Andy would come to school, he'd do their thing, and more, and more, and more, and finally he would go home. And the other good thing about Andy as a softball player, we went to some of the biggest dives in Edison Township when games were over for pizza and a little adult beverage, and we had a great time doing that. Let me talk about all-year functions that Andy did that we didn't have, he didn't have to do. Oh, am I off here? Okay, I'll make one.
Finish up, finish up.
One final comment, though. One final comment. No, this is running a little late. I want to thank the Board of Education and everybody that voted to get Andy, the auditorium named after him. In Edison Township, Edison High School has a football stadium named the Matthew Drawl Stadium. Well, Matthew Drawl was a sophomore-freshman football coach when I was in tenth grade. And Matt ended up coming down with something and he died. We didn't have a football stadium at Edison High yet, but when they did, they decided, they being the board, and I guess the A.D.s and the super, they named the stadium after Matt Drawl. Now, we have our football stadium at Stevens is named after, anybody think of that? Okay, Matthew Drawl. Matt Drawl was a guidance counselor, and he was the microphone guy for all of our home games. So in an average season, before we got the playoffs going as they did, he might, he might do about, you know, four or five games and that was it. Well, he also suddenly died, and it was determined that the stadium would be named after him, which it was. So having said that, one more comment about Andy. In nineteen eighty, when I was a VP up at J.P., we had a talent show that we started. We had it for five years, and it was a big sellout. Kids would fill the auditorium, you know, seven hundred kids would come, and all the money that we earned would go towards a Hall of Honor. I had the last Hall of Honor program there from nineteen, from 2022, and there were fourteen people inducted, and five of them took careers up in music. Thank you to Andy. Professional musicians or teachers. As a matter of fact, there was one teacher that, I think he was at the retirement ceremony, four hundred fifty people at the pines. The only people used to get four hundred fifty at the pines were the politicians around election time. But they filled it up with a lot of Andy's kids, and it was magical. So here's the deal. If the two football stadiums could be named after people that really didn't put that much time into the job, no fault of theirs, why can't we name the auditorium after Andy with fifty years of distinguished service in this school district? So God bless him and thank all you guys and girls. Okay, who's next?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I would love to hear more of Andy's story. I don't know, but sorry, we're running out of time. So, you know, if you don't mind, we could, you know, talk with a coffee or something, all right? Let's try to observe the minutes, six minutes, and, you know, I'm not going to stop you, as I said before, but when you are at the six-minute mark, and just try to wrap it up, you know? Okay?
All right. Hello, good evening. My name is Amy Buckaloo, J.P. Stevens, class of nineteen ninety-seven. This is my twenty-fourth year serving as a music teacher here in Edison, and I'm currently the proud band director at Woodbrook Elementary. I am here tonight to thank the Board of Education and administration for considering to rename the newly renovated J.P. Stevens Auditorium in honor of Andy Dina Cola. Sorry, I wasn't going to do this. Andy was my teacher for over thirty years ago. He was my mentor, he was my colleague, he was my friend. He was the reason that I chose to go into this profession. And he's the reason that I came back to Edison to be a teacher. It's very hard to describe in words how much he's meant to me and how much he means to the community, thank you. But I am so proud that his memory will be honored in the auditorium, where he inspired so many students to become the best versions of themselves, whatever career they chose. I know that the hundreds of family, friends, colleagues, and students who came to celebrate his legacy and his retirement party share my appreciation in your decision to rename the auditorium in his honor. Thank you so much, Dr. Alderelli, and thank you, the board.
Thank you. Mrs. Buckler, you did a good job, too. You know, with, you know, the school, the John Adams feeder program to the J.P. Stevens, you know, a lot of good students, I know two students. Okay, they're both of our kids. So, you know, my son still plays oboe. Thanks to you for picking the instrument for him when he was in, you know, John Adams. Yeah. So Matt?
Good evening. Matt Revneck, ETA president. So first of all, I'd like to say hello to Nick Romanitz. I ran into him in the hallway before. Nick was at J.P. Stevens for a good part of my career as vice principal, et cetera. You know, I'm up here for, actually, there's two people being recognized tonight for that, and that's, one of them's Harry Russell. Again, nothing much has been said about Harry. I have been, you know, again, I'm one of the people few in the room that knew of Harry and knew about Harry and all. And obviously Andy, which I've talked about in the past. I spent my whole career, other than the last two years with Andy or so, before he retired. So about thirty-three, thirty-four years together. It's funny, because a lot of times we parked next to each other in the morning, we'd have a discussion at, you know, six-thirty in the morning on walking in, et cetera, et cetera. You know, ETA, many, as you guys know, that have attended our events, uses the district music program for many of our events. And the way he was always introduced is the legendary Andy Dina Cola, and that's exactly basically what he is. He's a legend. So it's well-deserving for both of them. I'm glad to see them both being honored in the way that they are. I did want to thank Dr. Alderelli for our input to the calendar. I also want to thank all of my members who gave me feedback on it. It's never easy, as you said, as he mentioned. I actually created four calendars, submitted two. I know Mr. Ross had his group, and I know Central Ross, I think Dr. Huss was in charge of it or whatever. So it's never easy. You're never going to make everyone happy with everything you do, but I do think it is a good calendar. I know some of the things that we had talked about, you know, getting out much earlier in June, which we are, obviously not coming in on January 2nd, which was a big one. I don't think anybody would be here if we were. You know, so overall, I look at the calendar, I know you made a few adjustments or changes. I just hope we don't get snow in April next year. But other than that, you know, I think it's a, overall, it's a good calendar. I think most people should be fairly good with it. There is one conflict that was brought to my attention, I apologize because I missed it. On March 12th, you have a staff development day, but it's also the day of elementary, preschool and elementary conferences, which are single-session days.
I caught it directly before this Board of Education meeting and fixed it.
Okay.
On the agenda.
Okay, great. Appreciate it.
Printed one, printed one might not be correct, but the one on the agenda.
I called Mrs. Thymen this afternoon about something else.
So did I, frantically at five o'clock, yes.
That's one that I didn't catch, so very good, appreciate it. Yeah, that's one that I didn't catch, so very good, appreciate it. So like I said, overall, I think the calendar is good. There is one other question I have, really just from a point of clarification. I was going through the board, new board changes in the policies. There was one policy I'm curious about. There was a policy, unfortunately, I don't have them here, but it was about reporting for, or filling out the financial aid form, that it was necessary, mandatory. Is that a mandatory thing? Because I know, my daughter's a 26 and 30, and it was never a requirement. Is it something that became a requirement? Because I know a lot of people, especially nowadays, with what's going on in our country as well, you know, giving out personal information, financial information, a lot of people are hesitant. And knowing that you may not qualify anyway, why would you want to fill out a form that is not necessary? So I'm just curious about it. Thank you.
Mr. Shi?
Matt? Matt? We're looking for bus drivers. Matt?
Yep, so, yeah, so just to answer Mr. Revneck's question, yep. So that, it's part of the new law, but there's a waiver process also that's codified in that. So in the event that a parent does not want to fill that out, the pub, the school district has to offer a waiver process for that, too. And parents affirm that, and, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, on the calendar, actually, you know, the board member received another version before the published version. We provided some comments, and thank you, Dr. Alderelli, for making the changes. I liked the calendar. You know, the thing is, we try to finish a school early, right? June 25th is too late. And with us, since all, most of our buildings doesn't have the HVAC, so, you know, doesn't have the air conditioning. So we try to finish that early to, you know, avoid the summer heat. So that's one of the reasons things become a little bit packed. So with that said, Mrs. Talke?
Beth Talke, 15 Midwood Avenue. Once again, thank you so much for recognizing Andrew D'Nikola and naming the auditorium after him. Part of me thinks, as I sit back there and I watch the construction and seeing it delayed, knowing Andy, who does not like the attention on himself, he's up in heaven kind of messing with you guys a little bit, because he doesn't really want the recognition as much as we want it for him, knowing the kind of guy he was. Just a couple of questions on the calendar. You know, everything looks good. You said that that one date was changed, Dr. Alderelli. Do you know when it was changed?
Yep.
Until?
Yes.
What is it?
Yeah.
March 12th.
Yep, to March 13th.
To March 13th, to the Friday, then it's going to be a PD day?
No, I'm sorry, Ellen, I'm looking at this right now.
Okay.
So we have March 19th? I'm sorry, it's March 19th.
March 19th, that will be the PD day or the conference days?
Conference days.
Okay, thank you for that. Just one other question. I know, I guess graduation is set in stone for the 17th at Rutgers. There's no leeway on that. The only reason I'm bringing it up is just one of my questions in November for Election Day, with having all of our students in the building, it's going to be a big election with our governor race coming, and just the climate of our town, state, and country and world in politics. Is it best that we have all the kids in the school buildings with people coming in and out all day voting? So that's just, you know, one thing that I wanted to bring up, if there was anything we could do about that for, you know, the safety and so forth of all our students, because I think it's going to be a big race with the change of the governor. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but I think I owe this to Dean. I'm Yvonne Nelson, and I just represent the parents of those, of the students who worked with Mr. D'Nikola. My son is now a student at Rutgers Mason-Groves, and because of the discipline and all the musicianship that Dean instilled in those students, that's his path currently. JP Stevens jazz bands, marching band, concert bands are renowned around the state because of the quality of music and quality that Dean has presented. There was no goofing off with Dean. He was very strict. I can tell you that my son, only when Dean demanded him to be at school at 7:00 in the morning, he was running out the house, because he could not be late one minute. And those disciplines are what have motivated students at JP Stevens to become music teachers, and there are so many of them. And it ranges from the '70s to the '80s to the '90s. I remember May 15th, 2024, for the Jazz Extravaganza, Dean checked himself out of the hospital because he insisted on being at the Jazz Extravaganza that year. And of course, we know, five days later, he passed away. So that's how much discipline and how much dedication Dean had to his students. And I want to thank the board, and especially you, Mr. Shi, for actually considering this great honor for this legend, Mr. D'Nikola. And of course, he was a product of Edison as well. Thank you.
Thank you. It's the honor of the board to pass this resolution. And you're way too humble. You say one of the best in the state, one of the best programs in the whole nation. National, okay? All right. Okay, anybody else?
Harish Thatidhini, 45 McKinley. So it's always difficult to satisfy everyone with the calendar, I understand that. There will always be some complaints, but anyway. Thinking out of the box, today there was a discussion on social media regarding the spring break. Is it really necessary to have it at the time it is listed, like the end of March, first April? Most of the schools have it around that time, and normally people like to have a one-week vacation with their kids to Florida or somewhere else, and tickets are very expensive. So can it be moved one week out later, I mean to say? So this is something to think about for next year. Maybe it's too late this year. And there was also some discussion. Yes, I fully understand we don't have HVAC and what the board president said, it's better to close the schools early. So Edison being a diverse place, obviously, we need to respect the demographics in terms of religious holidays, so those cannot be cut. But can we have some standard as to one or maximum two per religion, so that we can have a longer spring break or winter break, and maybe close the school early? That is something, again, to think about for next year. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Harish. Anybody else? Resolutions only. Okay? Oh, Brian?
I learned my lesson.
Need glasses?
I can't see you. I was telling these guys, I can't see you guys from far away.
You don't need to see us, you know.
I apologize. I look different, right? So...
Lower the microphone, please. Thank you.
All right, and my time starting? All right, I have a lot to say, so I'm going to try to finagle this, because I want to talk about the positives, the glows and grows, like we talked about education, there's some glows here, and there's definitely some grows. So the first thing I want to do is...
Sorry, name managers.
The first thing I wanted to do is...
Sorry, name managers.
Brian Rivera, 98 Stony Road, as in New Jersey. Come over whenever you guys want. I would like to congratulate the families of Harry J. Russell and Andrew D'Nikola for the honor of having areas of JP Stevens High School named and renamed in recognition for their hard work and outstanding accomplishments with the Edison Township Public Schools. Their contributions have made a lasting impact on our schools and community, and we are proud to acknowledge their dedication and service. So I do want to recognize those two individuals, and thank you for their service. The other glow that I want to recognize is I looked at the audit report for the public distribution. So I reviewed it, the audit report for the public distribution. I want to extend my appreciation to John Toth and his team, who was here, for their diligence and hard work. The report reflects significant progress with only one recommendation made, outstanding achievement from your department, and I want to give you kudos to you guys. That's what we get when we staff the finance department properly, so, good job, guys, I appreciate it. So those are two glows I have for you. For curriculum, I had a question. I noticed that we are developing new advanced placement courses. Can you please clarify if those courses will also be offered for general sections for students who are interested in taking them, or will this exclusively be for advanced-level students? If not, why? You know, this is a conversation I had that I was, when I was on the curriculum committee, is that we're one Edison, so if there's classes being offered in South Edison, there should be the same classes being offered in North Edison. Again, we're one Edison, and our kids, no matter where they live, should have the same opportunity. I think I made that clear during the curriculum meetings. When it goes to, so there's administration, curriculum, finance, audit report. All right, regarding the bills list. I've asked for the bills list. Last board meeting, we made a couple of recommendations. I emailed and sent out texts, and I still did not receive the bills list, but I did get it anyway. As stated last meeting, sharing the bills list with the public before Board of Education approval is essential for transparency, accountability, and community trust. For providing the access to this information in advance, taxpayers can review their dollars are being allocated and raise any questions or concerns before final decisions are being made. Now, I bring this up, the bills list, because it was brought to my attention that Vishal Patel's legal fees have been included in this bills list, which is not accessible to the public. So the public would not even know that the public is paying these legal fees. These are same legal fees that I've been discussing the last previous board meetings and in past previous board meetings. I don't think it's response, it's not the responsibility of the taxpayer to pay someone's personal legal fees. So it was brought to my attention that it is on the bills list. So in this case, I believe it raises serious concerns about transparency and accountability in these issues. So my question is, is there attorney payment, is there an attorney payment for Vishal Patel's legal fees on the bills list? If so, I find it deeply concerning that this item is included on the agenda without being made publicly accessible. Again, transparency and financial manager matters is critical, and the public should have the opportunity to review these documents before they are approved. The public's not even aware about it, and we're going to take, I'm going to just take the kindness of you that you're doing the right thing and going to vote for us. None of us are aware that you're doing this. So additionally, less than two months ago, the vice president of the board, who's Vishal Patel, who now serves as a chair of the finance committee, who actually approved this, supported your election as board president. So this raises legitimate concerns about potential backroom agreements influencing board decisions to ensure public trust. It is essential that financial and governance matters are handled with full transparency and integrity. Furthermore, why wasn't a resolution not created for this? To guarantee that the public had full visibility into this process. Transparency is not an option, is a fundamental responsibility of the board to uphold the public's right to oversight of financial matters. So again, I sat on this board, we had these conversations when I was on the board, the board had made its decision, there's still members on this board that still made those decisions, and now suddenly it's being snuck in onto a bill list. I don't know if you guys even know anything about optics, but that looks horrible. That looks horrible. It's being snuck in, in the bills list, where the public has no access to it. No one knows about it. No one sees it. We're just slipping money in and paying the bill. To me, I feel that's disgraceful. So I want to let the board know my opinion, and I hope the board understands that a decision was made a year ago. The majority of the board pretty much said, "You're absolutely right." And now, no one's had this discussion. There's four members on the board that said "ghet" last time, and there's two new board members that don't even know the details to it. So if you vote on this line item, shame on you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So Eddie, you want to respond about the AP process?
Yeah, so, and Mr. Cohen can correct me on these pieces, too. So cybersecurity is offered at JP Stevens. The AP psychology is going to be offered at both high schools, correct? Edison High next year? Human geography?
Why don't you come? Both, right?
Yep. An honors job.
Good evening. Yeah, excited to announce that we're offering AP cybersecurity based upon a pilot that we approved by college board, and they, we were only eligible at JP for that pilot. So the idea is that we pilot next year at JP, and then we're able to run it at both high schools the year, the next year. With AP psychology, we wanted to launch it at both schools, but you're required to have a master, a staff member with a master's in psychology in order for college board to approve you deliver that. So we are able to do so at JP, and we're supporting a staff member to get that master so that in a year from now, we'll be able to also offer it at Edison High. There's no, we would love to be able to do both immediately, we just don't have the capacity. And then AP human geography will be offered at both schools next year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alan, you want to say a couple of things about the resolution?
Yeah, regarding the, in the bills list, the bills list will be published when the board votes on it, not prior. Reason for that is the bills may not be passed, or a bill may not be passed. Number two, the bill that you were talking about, Ms. Rivera, deals with a simple invoice from an attorney, and the board's going to vote on it through the bills list, because it's an invoice.
We can't hear anything through the echo.
It is a, in a nutshell, it's an invoice, is that better? I didn't think I needed a microphone. It's a simple invoice from a, from an attorney, they're paying the invoice.
Who's paying it?
The board pays the invoice.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Susan Campione, each year for Courten Edison. Just a couple of comments on the calendar. I know that spring break is when it is, because Friday is Good Friday, and that Sunday is Easter. But we went to naming every holiday, and it does not say that Passover is the first, and that's part of why we have spring break then, so if we could add that to it. The other thing is, I know that we're trying to give the whole week for spring break. I am an end-of-March baby, and there's still a risk of snow in April, and there's not a lot of wiggle room, so I don't, you know, teachers do get personal days and stuff. If we should go back to putting those snow days in May with Memorial Day, because we don't want to take Memorial Day if we have to close, and there's no other days. So it's a, it's a big gamble, but something to think about. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on resolutions? Sinan, can I have a motion to add public comments? Motion. Second? Okay, Mr. Eriko and Mr. Ramana. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So can I have, let's go through the items. Can I have a motion to approve personnel agenda?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
Got it, Charlie.
Yes. Mr. Eriko.
Yes.
Mr. Ronek Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Lugo.
Yes.
Mr. Ramana.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Ms. Pang.
Yes.
Vice President Patel.
Yes.
President Shi.
Yes.
Motion carries.
So I have a little break here. Now, we have the new JP Stevens football coach here, and with his wife. So I'd like to have him come over and say a couple of words.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody who was involved in this, the board, Dr. Alderelli, Dr. Huss, Dr. Kim, Doug Covert, Dave Marzano, everybody else. Most of you don't know me. I was actually at JP last year as an assistant coach. Prior to that, I spent most of my career coaching college football, most recently in Monmouth University. And I would say that the first game last year was arguably one of the top five moments of my career, when we were able to end the streak... of my career, when we were able to end the streak, and everybody was rushing the field, and it was like we just won a state championship. So that's, that's a moment I would like to bring back at the end of the season, all right? But my goal is to put a product on the field that you're proud of. Our kids are going to work hard, they're going to compete, they're great kids, and I'm just excited for the opportunity. Fortunately, we get to start a little bit earlier than they used to in the past. June 16th is the first day we can officially be on the field. So looking forward to that, and just getting the guys in the weight room for the next couple months until we're ready to go. So I appreciate it, don't want to take up too much of everybody's time, but looking forward to everything, and thanks again.
Thank you. Welcome, welcome, welcome.
Thanks, Coach.
So no pressure to do better than last year, right? Okay. All right, so we move on. Can I have a motion to approve Administration, Curriculum Instruction, and People Services?
Sure, excuse me, President Shi. Before we move on to that, I just want to, just a couple clarifying questions about the, the calendar, if you don't mind. Dr. Alderelli, you said the, the calendar here that's attached, the agenda electronically includes the changes that you had made and not the one he? I, I wasn't following that 100%.
Yep, it's only, it's what, it's just for conferences, actual conference dates right now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's so, but the, but the professional days and the half days, and the days off are all the same, it's just the movement of the conference.
Okay, just the conferences, okay, I just, no, thank you, I was trying to follow, but, all right, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. That's it? Okay. All right, so can I have a motion to approve Administration, Curriculum Instruction, and People Services, Special Services?
Motion.
Okay, okay, Mrs. White and Mrs. Pang.
Mr. Eriko.
Yes.
Mr. Ronak Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Lugo. Go ahead.
Yeah, sir.
Only abstain on anything related to C International.
That, that would be the next portion of the, yes. But I have, I got it. Mr. Lugo.
Yes, with an asterisk, if I could just explain.
Sure, go right ahead.
With the AP Human Geography, I was excited to see that it was entered, I'm, I'm very, I'm very fond of geography myself, but yes, with an asterisk, meaning that we actually follow up to make sure it's introduced as a, as a general education for, you know, for the broader students to, to take advantage of geography, care of work.
Mr. Romano.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Ms. Pang.
Yes.
Vice President Patel.
Yes.
President Shi.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, so let's move on, motion to approve Finance. Can I have a motion for that?
So, so actually, one more just question with, with the Finance. So there's a, there's a couple here in, in executive content that were put up twice, and one of them, looking at the cash report, I, it, is it added, was it uploaded twice in error? I don't see a difference between the two of these, is there a difference?
No, there should not be. The attachment that was submitted, the only thing that was added back was the bill list, because there was an add to the bill list.
Okay, because there's.
From the original.
Yeah, but there, but there's two cash reports, I printed both of them out, they're, they're identical, I don't see a difference.
There's no, yeah, there would be no difference.
There would be no difference.
Two, you're talking about the treasures report.
Yes, yeah, 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 treasury, yeah.
Right, it was probably just a duplicate upload.
Okay.
It's the same report added twice.
Okay, in, in two, about the bills list, so.
Sure.
There's only one that's going, so there's two there. There's a bills list and a revised bill, bills list. The difference is about 1.7, 1.8 million dollars between the two.
Correct, that was an add, right, it's an add to the overall list, yes.
Add to the overall list, okay.
So it's, it's basically so you don't have to reprint, like when you're adding, when you're developing the bills list, and you're still processing everything, if you're going to add something, right, so you don't have to reprint, you know, 20 odd pages, 30 pages.
Right, okay, okay, only because I was stuck going through, seeing what the differences are, kind of like between the two, they're both 116, you know, pages long, but, but with the, with the revised, with the revised bill list, I think the audience got it, got it right with Mr. Rivera's statement. The, the line item here for Hatfield Schwartz LLC, that decision was made last year. I'm not quite sure why it's back here, but the decision was made last year by the overwhelming majority of the Board. I don't know why it's back again this year, but is there, since it did get voted on multiple times and was voted down, is there a reason why it's added back? Because that was a decision by the prior Board.
To my knowledge, as I recall it, I don't believe, I believe it was discussed at other points in times during committee, meaning confidential session, last previous Board, not with this Board. I've, it, to my knowledge, it's never been, and I have the knowledge, it's never been on the bills list before. This is the first time.
This is the first time.
Correct, it's been presented. The others' times, it was discussed in committee, or in confidential session, rather.
Yeah, my, my understanding, it was never brought up for a public vote, and this is the first time to put on a public vote.
That's accurate.
And there is, the, the bill also reduced by quite a lot, and that's why.
Mr. Shi.
Yes.
What was originally discussed, I'm not sure I can talk about it.
No, you can't, but it's closed session.
So I'm going to, you know, with Finance, I'll just give you an advanced no.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Okay, I, on the Hatfield Schwartz, I'm fine with the whole Finance report, with the exception of that one, I'm a definite no on that.
Okay. All right, can I have a motion to approve the Finance resolution?
Motion.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, Mr. Eriko, Mrs. Pang. Call it.
Mr. Eriko.
Yes.
Mr. Ronak Patel.
Yes, and abstain to anything related to C International.
Thank you, sir, noted. Mr. Lugo.
Yes, with the exception of the line item, Hatfield Schwartz LLC.
Mr. Romano.
No, on the whole packet.
Ms. White.
Yes, on everything with the exception of Hatfield Schwartz.
Ms. Pang.
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Abstain.
On the entire bill list?
Well, yes, except, yes, except the bill list. Abstain for the bill list.
Okay, noted.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, so now we're open for public comments. Anything can come over and make comments, six minutes, so, yes, the gentleman in the back.
Who? Behind Dr. Toeth. Yes. No, not, not that gentleman.
Mary, sit down for a second. Yeah.
I live at 7th Doreen Court, D-O-R-E-E-N, that's in Edison. It backs up to the school property for the elementary school, which is Menlo Park. Yesterday, I was awakened to the sound of a four-foot, maybe close to five-foot diameter tree that was at least 50 feet high, that fell on my property or near my property and exploded like a bomb. I've lived at that address for at least 52 years, and not once in that timeframe has a major cleanup been done on those woods along Jamaica. Debris in that area has been landscapers dumping, even the people that did the improvements on the extension of the school in the back dumped construction debris there. A few times, the maintenance crew was nice enough to come out and cut a couple of trees, but they left the stumps and they left the cut-off branches there. And as we know from the California fires, the Department of Forestry has said that what exacerbated the fires was the fact that none of that debris was ever culled, it was just left there to rot and get to be smoldering, infernal-type material. So I'd like to implore this Board to do something about cleaning up that area because we're asking for a potential disaster. For instance, this morning, if that tree would have fell on the bus or fell on some kids, you'd have a very, very bad situation. Secondly, I think that there could be monstrous litigation because of the fact that that area has been unattended to. So I think it's in the Board's interest, as well as the interest of everyone in Edison, to have these woods once and for all thoroughly cleaned up. Now, you can say it's an expense, and I know that, but then again, if you wait another 50 years and amortize it, it's not that bad an expense. So please, look into this because it's a hazard, and it's waiting to happen. And you don't have to be a forestry expert to go out and look at the trees, they're dead, there's stumps there, there's debris all over the place, and it's just a fire that's waiting to go. And if it goes, it could threaten the school, it could threaten the houses, it could threaten a lot around there. So please, be responsive and look into this. My number's 732-742-7121. If I can be of any assistance, I've been here a long time, please call me. Again, the name is John Zurko, S-Z-U-R-K-O. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You got the number?
Yeah, no, thank you.
Okay, we'll, we'll follow up with you. We will follow up with you. Thank you very much. Okay, so actually, I, I forgot this, we need to go through the committee reports first, so let's go through the committee reports and reopen up for the, the public comments, sorry about that. So, committee reports, so.
Mr. Shi.
Yes.
I noticed with the committee reports, the library report, I'd just like to.
Yeah, let's, let's go through the, 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 one of the agenda, then we can add the library.
Please.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so Finance Facility?
Yep, hello, everyone. So we had a two Finance and Facility meeting, one on January 27, and another one on February 18. On January 7, meeting, the committee met for the first time. Our meeting started with meeting the Bond Council to discuss the financing option for future projects and the potential refinancing of existing leases to determine if it would be advantageous for the district. The next representative was from the USA Architect, met to discuss the final steps in preparing the James Madison Intermediate School project for the bid. Based on the architect's information, the product, project should be ready for the bid by end of this, this month. The Edison High School project, third phase, which includes interior altercation, expansion of orchestra room, and classroom medicine, were discussed during the, discussed with the potential bid dates for the phases that requires it. The committee also reviewed the project status list from the DMR Architects, and the meeting ended with Mr. Toth providing the brief overview of the budget process, and impact of potential increases stated, and other factors that are to be considered when developing the district budget. The meeting ended about at 6:30 PM, and in attendance were Vishal Patel, Ralph Ferico, Ronak Patel, Jerry Shi, and Jonathan Toth. The meeting happened again on February 18, from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Attendees were Vishal Patel, Ralph Ferico, Ronak Patel, Jerry Shi, Jonathan Toth, and Eddie Alderelli. The Capitol Projects Committee reviewed, discussed the following projects. Vidro Wilson, DMR Field Innovation, it was approved for fiscal year 25 budget. John Marshall, the DPE, NJDEP rejected and asked us to revise the specification. DMR will rebid in the March. JP Stevens cost estimate for engineering and paving parking lot are being prepared by the DMR. It was approved, I mean, for the, for the cost estimate work was approved for the DMR. JP Stevens access road discussion, we are considering to have another access road for JP Stevens from New Dover Road. So DMR was approved to work on it for fiscal year 26 funded. JP Stevens Science Lab Innovation, it was approved for FY '26 funding. Edison High School Switch Gear Project to be awarded on February 25. Edison High School Phase One Interior Renovation to be awarded on February 25, SSP. JMI, it's scheduled for bid March 12, and award on 29. JP NEHS Phone and Security System Upgrade, Upgrade Project has been funded for FY '26. JP NEHS Soft Wall Field Innovation Project has been approved for FY '26. JAM's Bus Loop and Parking Renovation has been approved for FY '26. JP Stevens Four Science Lab Renovation approved for FY '26. Air Conditioning, GMP and Washington approved for FY '26. EHS Orchestra Room approved for FY '26, and Eagle Scout Projects was approved as well. For Financial Discussion, FY 2024 Audit was reviewed, that was presented during the meeting. FY 2026 Pre-K Program, or, and our committee discussed the program and options for financing the program. Pre-K Building List was discussed, FY 02, FY 2026 Tax Levy Discussion happened, Capitol Projects was discussed, some bank and financial, fiscal specialty, the food services items were discussed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to highlight some of the things that in this, in this committee report. So one is the John Marshall School. We are going to go out to bid in March, and we received some feedback from DEP on that, so we're going to go out and rebid. And this is a $30 million project, okay? And the other thing is the JMI. JMI was supposed to be going on bid last January, and finally, we're moving forward next month to, to go out to bid on this one. There are two other things that was discussed before. One is the, the access road from the, to the back of JP Stevens from New Dover. That was discussed in 2023, because there was no movement on that, so it's, it's on the plan right now. And the other one is the traffic pattern at John Adams. Right now, the, the pattern is not good, so it's blocking each other. So we're going to take the, the front parking away and add the parking in the front, make the front parking a, a, a drop-off place, so, to help with the traffic. These are things that's planned before, and it's, it's not done. So the other key item I want to bring it up is, we're going to fund upgrading four science lab in JP Stevens, okay? And this is to anticipate what was the presentation was, the, the different pathways, the Alight House, the, you know, the, the stams and, and whatever. And also, I hope that people remembered, three years ago, the Biology Lab was cut from two periods to one period, and our students lost the competitive advantage on that course. So with these four labs, we're going to bring the two lab biology back, right? So it's important that, that, you know, we can get it done before the, the new school year. So there are a, a lot of, a list of a lot of other. So there are a lot of, a list of a lot of other items out here too. Edison High is going to, interior renovation is going to get redone, is going to be done, and also the orchestra room. And also on here is a switchgear. Switchgear is, we're putting a brand new switchgear to take all the load. If we down the road, we're going to put air conditioning. This switchgear is, is, has enough load to air condition the entire Edison High School. So people will say, hell, you know, you will never get it done. The Edison High School would never get it done because the, the infrastructure is so old. This is the first step to get the brand new HVAC into, into the Edison High School. So that's my comment. And with that said, CTC.
Thank you. So before I start, I just want to confirm the new, the upgraded classroom in JP Stevens will be expected to be ready by September?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the Finance Facility Committee to, you know, work this out. Because I remember, yeah, a couple of years ago, a lot of students and teachers came to this board meeting and expressed their concerns over the biology lab being cut. And they are afraid that this might hinder those, our students academically. So, and at that time, I promised that I would work on this as soon as we have the classroom available. And now that with these four science labs available in JP, I'm sure our curriculum committee will work with the administration to see if we can restore these biology labs. That, I'm going to start with the Curriculum Committee Reports. So we have our first meeting in January 30th from 4:00 to 5:30 PM in caucus room. We have two supervisors, Mark, Social Studies Supervisor Mark DiGio Vaccino and Supervisor Nicole Halping presented the proposed eight, new AP courses for our high schools. AP Human Geology, Geography, AP Psych, and AP Cybersecurity. The committee reviewed the logistic of these courses, including the placement criteria. I also want to take this opportunity to thank these two supervisors for their work to introduce these new courses. Very interesting courses, not just the easy AP courses. AP Cybersecurity is a brand new college board course. And I know a lot of students who are into computer science will be excited about it. AP Psych is also fascinating and quite useful. And Geography, well, it was actually a required course back in my middle school. I still remember learning about Yellowstone and Cowboy Culture on the other side of the earth. So we, we would really like to foster the interest in geography. So the committee actually proposed to introduce Geography as elective in our middle school. So we'd like to see that happen. All the detailed information would be shared to our students before the elective course registration begins. We also talk about the STEM Academy and pathways. I won't be, you know, repeating that because I think Nicole has already gave a very excellent presentation about the pathways. We also talk about the colliding, frequently colliding tax test schedules. The committee conveyed the concerns about multiple tests being scheduled on the same day in our high schools, causing a lot of stress and challenges in managing this preparation. I've heard complaints from students, parents, and our staff members where there are eight tests in one week. And students, you know, they have to study for later exams of the day in other classes, like working on math in Spanish or gym class. So to address this, the committee recommended implementing a structured assessment schedule, which, with each department selecting a designated day of the week so that we can prevent schedule conflicts. For example, just for example, major math test could be on Mondays, English test will be on Tuesdays, and so on. So hopefully, this would help alleviate some of the stresses for both our students and our teachers. The last thing we discussed is the SAT tutoring. The committee discussed the ways that the district could offer more free resource to help our students prepare for SAT. This is also on the campaign, you know, discussed during the campaign last year. And we have some good news. We have confirmed with the district partner, varsity tutors, that they offer free SAT prep through their own demand platform. So to our students, our high school students who's preparing for SAT, be sure to check it out and take advantage of these free resources. It's available to all our students in the district, and we'd love to hear your feedback. Additionally, the committee is exploring more structured and subject focused SAT tutoring options, possibly during the summer. So stay tuned for updates. That's my, that's conclude my curriculum committee reports.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Penn. So, you know, the SAT tutoring, please make sure that we advertise that so the students can take advantage of it. And we all know SAT tutoring is very expensive. We offering this free tutoring, please take advantage of it. And I just saw this, the academic pathways. I mentioned a couple of them. I mentioned four of them, but I missed one more. There's a pre-law program. Thank you. So we have STEM, Business, Computer Science slash AI slash Cybersecurity, Allied Health, and now pre-law. These are the tracks that we want to pursue. It's fantastic. Thank you very much. Oh, there's a few more plans, okay. All right, so next is Community Relations and the Parent Advisory Committee.
Oh, that's me. So before we begin, I just want to quickly highlight the purpose of this committee. We, we often talk about transparency and to me, true transparency come through communications. The goal of this community, Community Relationship Committee is to create a clear and an open channel between the Board of Education and the entire community, our parents, students, staff, and administration. Our role is to keep stakeholders informed of what's happening in our schools and also gathering feedback and concerns from our community so that they can be addressed. The board cannot be on the island. It must be connected to both the administration and the community to be effective. I firmly believe that communication transparency are the key to a successful board, and this committee is here to serve this purpose. So with that said, our first Community Relationship Committee was held on January 28 from 3 o'clock to 4:30 PM in caucus room with attendees Dr. Adi Rali, Dr. Chris Huss, Mrs. Heather Daniel, Shannon Penn, Angela Patel, Mr. Jerry Shi, and Mrs. Jenny White. We started with a few updates from Mrs. Daniel. SAGES, it's a abbreviation for Superintendent's Advisory Group for Empiring Students. So we have this new initiative. We have 50-plus students who volunteers as SAGES from both of our high school. And they had their first meeting earlier that day, on January 28, at Ed Center. I also heard some of the feedback from our students. They're very, very positive. Now that they can talk directly to our superintendent, which has never happened before, and they can freely express their concerns. So overall, they feel great to get involved in our school matters. And we are planning for future meetings to be happened in our, each of our high school in the following months. And I think this is a fantastic initiative, and I applaud for our administration team to make it happen. The second update we got is the Parent University, which took place on January, no, Wednesday, February 12th, at Edison High. And we have a job fair coming up, scheduled on Thursday, March 6, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM at Menlo Park Elementary School. And I hope with, you know, Edison's excellent reputation, we could attract many talented teachers. The committee also discussed, as promised on our campaign flyer last year, we are working to provide benefit for our Edison senior citizens, taxpayers who don't have children go to our school anymore. To foster this community engagement, we plan to offer free tickets to our school events, like plays, musicals, and sports games. The committee discussed logistics, including how to create and distribute senior ID cards, provide front desk support at Ed Center, and coordinating with Edison Senior Centers. So if you're a senior citizen interested in attending our school events for free, please reach out to our committee. We will be very happy to assist you. We also talk about Education Foundation. The committee reviewed organization structure, including ex-official members, foundation officers, and the recruitment process. Final detail will be confirmed soon and shared with all parties. And in the meantime, if, you know, if you're interested in participating, please reach out to the committee or any board members. We'd love to hear your ideas and suggestions. Last thing we talked about was student interns. The committee discussed expanding district-wide student summer internship. As a professional, I understand how valuable these first internship experience are for future careers. And as a parent, I know how tough it is to watch kids sleeping and do nothing all summer. So talking about experience, from experience. So this summer, we're bringing our students intern to our, to our, into our district. And we're actively seeking partnership with vendors and local business. The board is committed to create as many internship opportunities as possible. So stay tuned for more good news on this top, news on this topic. That is our first meeting. Let me get my second meeting. So we have been, you know, working hard. Committee met again just a week later for our second meeting. I'm proud to say that we're working hard and making progress. And a big thank you to Ms. Daniel for hosting another meeting so soon, allowing us to dive deeper into the discussion, to get things rolling. There, so the second meeting was held on February 6, 2025, from 4:00 PM to 5:00 PM at caucus room. And in this meeting, we focus on two new initiatives. The first one is the monthly newsletter. Again, this committee is focused on to enhance communication and transparency. So to achieve this, we are going to collaborate with the administration team to provide regular monthly newsletters with important district updates. The committee discussed the logistic of the newsletter, covering its format, content, and frequency. The first edition will be released on March 1st, featuring updates from our schools as well as from our board. Parents will get a glimpse of what's happening in our schools and what the board has been working on. You will be the judge of whether this board is doing its job or not. The second initiative is the Parent Involvement, PALS. Parents United in Listening, Sharing, and Engaging. This is a brand new initiative. And once again, Mrs. Daniel came up with the fantastic name, fantastic name, PALS. Similar to the Sage, SAGES program that gets students involved, PALS is about engaging parents. The idea is to, is for the committee and the superintendent's team to host a larger scale parent meeting every couple of months during after work hours to encourage participation. But as it turned out, participation is really not a concern at all. Just two days after our registration opened, we had more than 150 parents sign up. And we actually had to close the registration earlier than expected. So in summary, PALS is a platform for parents to ask questions, share concerns, and offer suggestions. It's open to all parents on a first come, first served basis. It is basically a bridge connecting our parents with the board and administration, reinforcing open communications. Our first meeting will take place this Thursday in two days at 6:30 PM. And I hope it's going to be a productive event for all of us. And given this high demand, the committee is also considering holding the meetings more frequently to better meet our parents' needs. Oh, and I forgot, we mentioned, we discussed one more thing, the JP, JP Pride Partners Initiative. So we knew that our JP Auditorium will be ready soon. And of course, this committee is brainstorming ways to secure donations to support our high school art programs. So we've come up with a couple of ideas. Buy a Seat Campaign, so you can sponsor a seat with a personalized, personalized nameplates. And War of Recognition, so you can also purchase a commemorative plaque to be proudly displayed on our auditorium wall. So once we finalize these plans, we will share the details so you can get your names on the wall while also helping out our, to fund our art programs. It's going to be a win-win situation. Thank you. That's all for the community report.
Thank you. So just a couple of things I want to mention is the Education Foundation. This is something that I wanted to get it done two years ago. And finally, we have that in place. So we're going to start setting up the, the foundation soon with the, their executive board members and so on. So we're going to send out emails asking the, the community members to sign up for it. So we'll go through the process and, and select the executive board. And they can take the, the foundation and run with it. Of course, the school board will do everything we can to, to help them. And one of the other things that was mentioned in the committee report is internship. It's very important that not only our kids get out of the home instead of playing on the computer, to do something that's useful and also make some money and also help the, you know, staff, staffing a little bit for the district. So two years ago, we had internship for the, in a district. We also have vendors participating in providing internship. So we'll continue to looking for opportunities from our vendors to give back to the community. And so we can see if we can get more internship this year than, you know, two years ago. And that's it. All right, so we have Policy Committee. Chris.
Thank you, Board President. We had our, our Policy Committee meeting on February 10. And in attendance was myself, along with other committee members, Angela Patel, Ronak Patel, and President Shi. Other attendants, other attendees included Dr. Alderelli, Dr. Christopher Huss, Dr. Tuie, Ms. Heather Daniel, and Mr. Patrick Cassane. So the Policy Committee met on February 10, and we reviewed Strauss ESMA Policy Alert Number 234. The alert focused on mandatory policies that were associated with the Uniform State Memorandum of Agreement between Education and Law Enforcement Officials, based on the 2023 revisions and updates in the law. Mr. Cassane provided an overview of the mandatory changes to these policies. Next, the committee reviewed general policy updates, including the outstanding mandatory policies from our 2024 audit. The committee reviewed all the necessary revisions and options. Dr. Alderelli answered questions at the conclusion of the meeting regarding the district's mandatory student attendance policy. And we ended up concluding our meeting at 6:00 PM. And that's pretty much all we have for the Policy Committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So you mentioned a student attendance policy. Actually, I got some questions from parents. There are students attend these clubs and extracurricular activities. They go out to do competitions representing the state. And these are the clubs that's, some of them are the school clubs, some of them, more of them are not the clubs in the schools. So when they come back and they're saying that, that, you know, it's the absentee is unexcused. So we talked about this, and now I'm going to have Dr. Alderelli talk something about, about this policy, you know, moving forward.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Shi. Yeah, during the committee, these questions were brought up in relationship to the policy, but the regulation is probably what was discussed the most, right? So the state really only acknowledges two aspects of attendance. You're either here or not here. And excused absences are part of a process here that almost all school districts in the state of New Jersey abide by, along with the minimum requirements for reporting to parents and the mechanisms for that. But in the instance in which Mr. Shi described, we talked about the. we talked about the, the excuses that are outlined in policy that would be provided for an excused absence, right? It would be the use of a doctor's note, the observance of religious holidays. And then there was two provisions which were discussed in relationship to your question in the regulation, which were educational experiences, right? As well as discretionary pieces that are, you know, administrative in nature in regards to that. So in the event that there was any confusion as to whether a absence was excused or not excused, you know, obviously, your concierge would be your building-level leadership. And if they have ever any good questions, they, you know, they would always give myself, Dr. Huss, or the chief academic officers, or Dr. Tuie a call.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so not on this agenda is the Transportation Committee. We had a brief meeting yesterday. There was some a little bit mixed up with the schedule. So just me and Mrs. White were in attendance. And from the administration side, Dr. Alderelli, Mr. Toes, and our head of Transportation, Doc Ullin. So we reviewed the, the subscription bus last year and plus the mandated transportation. We're transporting about a little bit over 9,000 students, you know, this current year. So we talked about providing a bus service to all. And after the discussion, so we have decided on March 15th, we're going to open up the portal to have parents who are interested in the transportation service. Those are the people who has not received the service before to register. And so we're going to open up the registration for about three months. And based on the demand of the registration, we will see if we can secure transportation for these students. These are the students that's not provided service right now. And they're probably within the one, one, one and a quarter and within the one-mile radius. So, so we're going to open it up and we'll see what the demand is. Again, this is not a free service. It's a subscription service. When you live outside the two and two-and-a-half mile radius, the, it's, we provide free services. And this is within the, within the, the radius. So let's see how it works out. And, and let's hope we can provide more buses. So every one bus we provide, we can get 850 cars out of the, the street. So this is, you know, and alleviate some of the congestions during the school start and dismissal time. So March 15th, I'll watch the email and register. We'll open it up for three months. Thank you. Okay, so now we are back to...
Excuse me, President. May I just make a comment for the Transportation Committee? I would, I would like to give my sincerest apology for not being able to make the meeting yesterday due to circumstances. The, that, that time schedule on the calendar, it, it escapes me. And I just want to, I, I hope you accept my apologies to the board and to the staff for not, not being able to make it.
Thank you. So I was going to actually mention this in the, in the, in the board member comments. But since Chris brought it up, I'm very, very grateful that Chris is here today. So his father-in-law just passed very, very recently, a couple of days ago. So, you know, that shows the dedication of all board members coming here, you know, to serve the public. So our condolences and prayers goes to you, your family. And just let us know if there's anything that we can do to help. Feel free.
Thank you for those words. Thank you.
Thank you for, for coming to the meeting. Really appreciate it. Okay, with that said, so we're going to resume the public comments. So, okay. Beth, you're next.
Harish Thatineni, 45 McKinley Street. Thank you, Jerry and Shannon, for giving the update on JMI, the JAMS traffic study, and the Biology Labs. Jerry, I know you can read my mind. You knew that I would be asking about that anyway. Better late than never. And hopefully, along with the traffic study, the lane will also be widened.
There's no, no study. We're, we're going to do it.
Okay, thanks. I still remember the dimensions and the rainy day that me, you, Biral, we took the dimensions, 26.5, 28.5, and 30. Anyway, so coming back to the curriculum, they say a picture is worth a thousand words. And I think all of us pretty much agree on that. And lot has been said about arts today. So I know two years back, we had that unfortunate change in schedule for arts and world language in middle school. And the change in AB's schedule and all, whatever it was, I, I still don't know exactly the root cause. Is, is it, I'm assuming it's not a scheduling thing because we have enough money to hire an additional teacher. So most probably, it is the space constraints. So that brings me to the next question, like, where exactly are we with the JAMS expansion? I will stand by what I said in the past. Obviously, high school is more important than middle school. And since both the high schools have been addressed, I think it's time we move on to addressing the overcrowding situation in terms of building more rooms at the middle schools. So especially JAMS. I know there's no architect plan, there's no ideas for funding, et cetera, but that is something to consider. And more importantly, so if it is because of the space issues, so it would be helpful for us parents if we could get a confirmation, like if this is going to be the situation for the next three years. So that though, I know music is for the entire year. Music has a separate music room, band room, whatever they call it. But if arts and Spanish or French world language is going to be six months and then discontinued for the rest of the year, then it would be helpful for us to get a confirmation so that we can make arrangements for outside tutoring for the remaining six months. I mean, it's common sense. We don't even need to debate that. Let it be art or Spanish language or any other language or any other subject for that matter. Like, I know I made similar points earlier in the, for the elementary school about science and social being continued and not like every alternate marking period or trimester, whatever it is. So if something of that sort can be done in the middle school for art and world language, I know one, some set of students have it in the first six months, then other set of students have it in the other six months. Instead of that, can we do it alternate weeks? Is that something that is doable? If it is not, at least be upfront so that we can make outside arrangements. So that would be very helpful. Another thing, lot of... So, so a lot of high school students, especially from JPS, their parents, they have a complaint that teachers are not posting the assignment grades and the quizzes, the short quizzes and the pop-up quizzes, whatever they call, in a timely manner. It, it would be very helpful for the students and the parents to go through the grades and then see where exactly they are going wrong and why they are going wrong. Is it a silly mistake or is it a concept problem or something like that? I do that with my daughter, who is in elementary school. I, I log into Genesis every day, actually. And there are different theories as to why that is being done in high school. I don't want to go into that. But it would be helpful if, there is a time limit set for grading those quizzes and assignments and posting it. In some extreme cases, it appears that they are being posted at the end of the marking period. That would be really ridiculous, honestly, because it's of no use at that time. And we always complain when there is a problem. So we have to recognize when something good is being done. One teacher I would like to highlight is Mrs. Elliott from JMI. She was my daughter's homeroom teacher two years back. And in terms of punctuality of grading and assignments or for that matter, the standard of teaching everything, I mean, up till now in Edison schools, she's the best that I have come across. Both my nieces, they were from Virginia. They are GT students. They went to Thomas Jefferson in Virginia. They went to Ivy League colleges. They work for big companies. When they came two years back to my home and they were talking to my daughter, they were amazed at her knowledge about the business projects and science and social knowledge. Mrs. Elliott was used to teach her at that time. So I hope we have more teachers like Mrs. Elliott, both in terms of teaching and punctuality of posting the grades and everything. Thank you.
Thank you. So you mentioned about John Adams' expansion. So John Adams is the, in the first phase of the plan. John Adams is the only school left with trailers. So I don't want to put the students in trailers. At the end of the day, it's money. Once we have enough funding, we're going to build, we'll expand John Adams' school. Right? So we have four schools that has trailers. JP Stevens, five classrooms. You have John Adams has two classrooms. You have JMI has two classrooms. And you have Marshall right now, two classroom or, you know, are in trailers. All the, all these other schools are getting expansion. We're going to get rid of all the trailers. And the next is, is John Adams. Right? We need, we need funding for that. So we're working on it. So that's it.
Uh...
Yeah, you want to say a couple of words?
Yes, Harish, that schedule actually was changed back a couple of years ago with the committee's effort. Actually, we had a better schedule. I think we added one more period to all the middle school called One Period. The eighth grade actually can have foreign languages every day now. Eighth grade honor students can have foreign language every day. And seventh and sixth, seventh can also have it...
Seventh is the same.
Every day, except sixth graders are having it every other day. So it was back to, for sixth grader, it was back to before. And for seventh and eighth grader, it's actually improved better, have a better schedule than before. So it's no longer like half a year, half a year thing. That, that is gone.
No, 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 no. You can come back later. So let me just reiterate. Seventh and eighth grade, we double the world language, we double the, the arts program. Okay? So it's not every other day. And for the sixth grader, it goes back to the old way because we're short of staff. Right, of world language stuff. So we're working on it and we'll try to make that as the same as the seventh, eighth grader. Thank you.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
I don't know. Well, it's a public comment right now.
Yes.
Well, I have a chance to talk.
Yes, we have board member comments too. If you want to respond to any of this, you can, you can respond.
The only thing I, you know, I really understand about the expansion. I really do. The fact of the matter is not trailers, no good. I mean, we don't, we don't need that.
Thank you.
Woodrow Wilson's got trailers. Actually, they made them permanent. The fact is, is that, you know, we're talking about funding formula? That's fine. I have no problem with that. But coming up on a funding formula, I think the public has to know about it. And that's all, you know, that's all right now. I'd rather talk about what the public, listen to the public, and then my comment, that would be, if I wouldn't mind.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't call the Woodrow Wilson schools trailers because they are modular classrooms. So they're different than...
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So, all right, so who's next? Beth, yeah, yeah.
Beth Talke. I have a couple of different questions and stuff that's been brought to my attention from neighbors, colleagues, and so forth. One of their questions is, in the middle school, there seems to be a lot of different electives that are offered at some schools and not at others. And those parents want to know why that isn't more consistent. I'm sure it has to do with staff and space and so forth of that and piloting. But that's been an issue that's been brought up a lot this week. Secondly, Shannon brought up about like possible like SAT tutoring for our students. My question is, who would be doing that? Is that also the varsity tutoring that we've been using? And my question with varsity tutoring is, are those tutors New Jersey-certified state teachers? Because teachers in our state have higher qualifications than teachers in some other states that we might be getting. So are we getting the most bang for our buck for our students with the expectations and the high standards, which we expect from, you know, our teachers and our staff giving our students? Are we getting that from this outsourcing company? And what cost would that be approximately, you know, for our taxpayers and stuff, for these kids' SAT tutoring? How many kids would it entail? And thirdly, the other question that was brought up to me by some parents is, what's going on with the preschools for next year? When is the portal going to be open? Is it going to be the same number of kids? Is it going to be the lottery? I'm also going to ask you, I know we had issues with the grant last year. What's coming up with that? What's that cost going to be to taxpayers and so forth? And when's that due? And if we're applying for it again, when and if we know how much money and when we would be receiving it? Because I'm still worried with also the state of affairs in the state, how much money we're going to get come that budget time. I don't know if you guys got your numbers today or whatever yet. So what's that cost going to, you know, cost us as well? And those are my questions. Thank you.
Yeah, I could tackle a few of those, Mr. Shi. Thank you so much for talking. Middle school, different electives? Yeah, so a, a bunch of different criteria, right? We pilot a few at some of the different schools, based on certification too as well. Also in consultation with building-level principals and the supervisors, right? We try to provide electives that are based off of student interest as well too. Once we pilot those, we look to expand them at all of the other middle schools. But, you know, in certain situations, we do, we do run into difficulty finding staff that are properly certified. SAT tutoring, I don't believe meets the requirement, I don't believe there's a requirement for SAT tutoring for New Jersey, New Jersey-certified teachers in relationship to that. I, I don't want to comment that all of them are. I know that some of them are. Mr. Cohen will probably have that answer a little bit better than me, and he could follow up with you in a little bit. Or actually, he can come to the microphone and talk about it right now.
I can just touch on the, the varsity tutor, that, that varsity tutor would offer for SATs is all free. All the tutoring from varsity tutors is all free.
Yep.
So in terms of bang-for-the-buck question, I just wanted to clarify that. And then...
Certification.
Certification, so, you know, it's, it's a free service. So it's not required that they have a certificate.
Got you.
Yeah, the, when we spoke to varsity tutor, they actually talked to us about, you know, these, based on the conversation, they're very highly qualified. And, and right now, if you look at, you know, what's going on, you can have a high school student tutoring another one. So, you know, if there's, if our students goes into this SAT tutoring, if they find the tutor is not providing the service, you know, there's a, there's a feedback mechanism with varsity tutor. And they can also talk to the district and we'll, we'll address that. So the preschool.
Yeah. Preschool, we, we, we addressed preschool in recent discussions, not only in our finance meeting, but we also have a special education meeting that's coming up tomorrow. Are we applying for the grant? The answer is yes. Are we aggressively pursuing getting this grant? The answer is yes. Lottery will be coming out shortly. Correspondence from Dr. Tuie's office will be made available. I want to say we're probably doing that in March, Dr. Tuie. Scope is going to be determined based off of some numbers that we get on Thursday and discussions with the Board of Education.
Thank you. Hope that I answered your question. Hope that I answered your question. So who's next?
Or anyone in our school system says, I'm considering changing genders. Do you advise them of the risk? Do you tell them you may regret it down the line? You may not be able to have children down the road. You've done harm to reproductive system. Are they counseled in that way? Now, I'm going to stop here. There's a little bit, a half minute on the clock. And the reason I'm stopping with about half minute left is because everyone who's come to this podium has gotten feedback from the board. I don't think I've had one feedback in the year I've coming here. I'd like to hear something from you guys. What do you think about this? Any thoughts? No thoughts? Man. Okay. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening and thank you for your service. My name is Gerald Macleod from the Dolores Turco Foundation. And today I'd like to talk about meaning and values and how the lack of it relates to the epidemic of loneliness and unhappiness among young people and what we can do about it now. Some of the reasons why young people are unhappier than any time before the data's been collected is because of increased drug addiction, less human interaction due to cell phones and fear of the future. This nation became the freest and most affluent in the world because of its Judeo-Christian and American values. The first American value was to keep government as small as possible with non-governmental organizations such as churches and clubs, Knights of Columbus, et cetera, providing Americans with friendship and help for the neediest. The second is middle class values such as marriage, having children, family, job, self-discipline, delayed gratification. And the third value was patriotism. Until the 1960s, Americans grew up loving our country, admiring our forefathers, valuing our liberty. What made America exceptional was not its flaws, which are universal, but its virtues, which are not. Unfortunately, these values have been attacked. Children are led to believe that God is nonsense, our country is evil, marriage is obsolete and their future is bleak. The results are devastating. The majority of births to millennials are unmarried women, yet single mothers are the loneliest of all Americans. People today have more money, better health, better housing, live longer, and yet they're lonely and unhappier than ever before. Viktor Frankl, in his masterpiece, Man's Search for Meaning, found that aside from food, the greatest human need for meaning is for meaning. Nothing has given people more meaning than religion. The decline of religion is the biggest reason for loneliness in the U.S. and around the world. Every human being is created in the image and likeness of God. Their lives have great value, dignity, meaning and meaning. Unfortunately, one third of Americans born after 1980 do not affiliate with any religion. I realize that we cannot promote religion in public schools, but we can teach values such as self-discipline, delayed gratification, and how to avoid risky behaviors. And research shows that if students graduate from high school, get a job, get married and then have children, there's only 2% chance they'll become poor. And that's called the success sequence. And as part of a poverty prevention program, our foundation brought these optimal standards, coupled with tutoring, to Barringer High School, which has one of the lowest graduation rates in the state with the highest rates of poverty and teen pregnancies and STDs. And as a result of the pilot, 100 students were accepted to college and 58 maintained a 3.0 average or above. Since the changes in comprehensive health standards in 2021, sex education in New Jersey has caused controversy, especially with parents, while academic standards plummeted. If you want the best performance from your students, you must give them the best standards in education. And I can guarantee you that the optimal standards in sex education, recognized by the top professionals in the nation, is in the context of marriage and sex risk avoidance. The motivation behind this initiative is love. Love for kids, not only to protect them from harm, but to see them flourish. Because if they're given the opportunity to flourish, they're less likely to be involved in harmful, risky behaviors. Parents are the most important factor in influencing their children and protecting them. But education is also important. If kids are engaged in meaningful activities, if their minds are challenged to higher standards, if they feel good about their accomplishments and have hope, they're more likely to succeed. And I must say that this district has some of the highest scores in proficiencies. But, and I do commend you, and I commend you for your wonderful programs. But still, Americans want the best for their education. Their kids deserve the best. Yet Americans are at the bottom of the spectrum for educational proficiencies in the industrialized world. Our kids have beautiful hearts, beautiful minds. Let's fill those hearts and minds with the optimal education standards that will help them flourish. Because these proficiency problems will go away when we replace curriculum that's not meeting basic literacy of math and literacy standards with optimal current curriculum that does. The new administration began with the end of the transgender lunacy on the first day of his office. The president signed executive orders to end child mutilation and gender, get gender ideology out of the K to 12 schools and make the official policy of the U.S. government that only two genders, male and female. Already, the U.S. Office of, Education Office for Civil Rights has filed Title IX complaints against Virginia schools for failing to eliminate gender ideology in the K to 12 schools that are receiving federal funding. They are investigating, quote, preferential treatment of students whose gender identity is not the same as their biological sex over students whose gender identity is the same as their biological sex. And Maine schools, there's investigations of those schools as well. The House of Representatives, oh, just a second. Okay, all I want to say here is if we expect better performance from our students, we must give them the best standards. If they're failing, it's because we're failing them. And I've come to believe that the only failure is the unwillingness to try something new. Because if at first we don't succeed, you can always try again. Because it's not the one with the greatest talent or intelligence that succeeds, but the one that never gives up. So let's not give up on our students. Give them the best. Thank you and God bless you.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, teachers, administrators and guests. My name is Gail Lance. I live in, I've lived in Edison for 13 years and presently live in East Brunswick. I have two granddaughters in the New Jersey public school system. I would like to speak tonight also on Policy 5756 and the harm that this policy inflicts on the minds and hearts of children by opening the door to confusion. Children's hearts are tender, innocent, malleable and therefore vulnerable if not protected and guided properly. The job of protecting a child's heart from confusion, uncertainty and ideas that could potentially corrupt their thinking is the responsibility of each of the adults in a child's life. Parents, teachers, school counselors and administrators, coaches, doctors, instructors, et cetera. Setting aside some of the extreme ideas out there that, that one can identify as anything he or she chooses to, introducing ideas about gender identity to young children only confuses them by forcing them to consider and/or doubt their own gender identity. Due to their ages, lack of exposure or life experience and their innocence, they do not have the mental capacity to effectively evaluate this sort of information. In addition, for the 1% of children who may suffer. Sorry, I just lost my place. In addition, for the 1% of children who may suffer from gender dysphoria, Policy 5756 prohibits teachers and counselors from informing parents about their child's confusion and to keep separate files on them regarding this, to be viewed only by school staff and not shared with parents. This is an egregious offense and infraction against both the child and the parents as well as the family unit. It destroys the very foundation of a child's existence, his family, essentially stealing families away from these children by putting a wedge in those relationships and removing the trust they need to have in their mothers and fathers to mature and thrive in their lives. It also now goes against policies of the new federal administration and jeopardizes federal funding. I think back on myself as a child and how vulnerable I felt about navigating life. Thoughts about my sexual identity never entered my mind. And what about each of you? I ask you to think back about what your own childhood thoughts and experience were like and how you might have felt hearing confusing information about sexual identity. Would the child you were have benefited from what is being lauded these days as compassion, care, diversity, equity and inclusion? Or would you have been harmed and further confused by the idea of multiple and varied gender identities and the notion that one could be anything he or she chooses to be? And this is just the beginning of the whole thing. Disseminating this sort of information to children stimulates and initiates the thought processes and subsequent confusion that begin to take hold in a child's mind. From there, the caring adults in their lives take over and further perpetuate the confusion and the lies they are believing about themselves by taking steps to affirm them and guide them toward medical interventions. Would you want this for your own children and grandchildren? It is common knowledge that most children with gender dysphoria grow out of it at some point after puberty. I feel like common sense has completely left the conversation. I don't believe any rational thinking adult would think that this idea is good or right. In the very first book of the Bible, God says, He made them male and female. No confusion there or room for interpretation. The Bible also warns those who would bring harm to children. God takes the care and protection of children very seriously. My prayer is this, that educators, counselors and school boards across the state and the country keep the welfare, the mental soundness and stability of all children at the forefront of their minds when making decisions on their behalf, not separating out, not separating out a particular group as special at the expense of all the others. At the forefront of the decision-making process should be, is it in the best interests of all children? Does what is being proposed keep the children's hearts pure, innocent and unaffected by things they are not equipped to understand? As we are all now aware, the introduction of DEI materials into the mainstream has perpetuated the explosion of transgenderism. All this phenomena is, is young people crying out for attention, longing to be noticed and doing things they know will get them the attention they crave. I dare say that this explosion has put a tremendous strain on the resources of our schools and many other areas of society. I heard an important, an important sentiment recently at another school board meeting. What do you want your legacy to your school board to be? One of, one of taking innocence and stability away from children at the expense of giving them a strong core education? Or one of protecting young minds and hearts? Strengthening children academically and steering them toward their best lives? This is, this is the important decision you have to make. Thank you for your time this evening and your service to this community. I urge you to vote finally to rescind Policy 5756 from this district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cindy Ma and I'm from Edison. I want to, I also want to address Policy 5756. Again, this anti-parent policy was rescinded by the Board of Ed, by you guys. Okay? And then the board reversed the decision and kept this policy in place. I was there at the marathon meeting. And when the board voted to keep this policy of not allowing parents to know if their child is transgender in school. This policy was never made known to parents in the first place. It was put in place without any public disclosure. Even now, if you, as a typical parent right now, if they know what Policy 5756 is about, most parents are clueless. This policy violates the rights of parents to parent their own children through very difficult times in their lives, of such a sexual, de-sexuality. This policy was put in place by educators without their consent. And now parents have to fight to get back their rights as parents to know about their child's sexual identity in school is outright crazy. I was there at the board meeting when many testimonies were given that this policy, 5756, will prevent transgender students from committing suicide. And it will keep them safe from their parents who would try to change them. That is not true. When we put children's feelings and rights of trans identity from their parents, it gives children more power and control than they are capable of. It's so seeds of mistrust of their parents and conflicts and it destroys families and shows, you know, conflicts between schools and parents. It causes division. We prevent suicide ideation in children by giving them the truth. There is only male and female, which is God's design from the beginning of time. Children were not born in the wrong body. They should not change their body to match their feelings. If they know that truth, then they can change their mind. They will learn that when they change their minds, their feelings will follow. They will know the truth and the truth will set them free. I remember when being gay was being normalized in school. And the reason given, given was that homosexuals were born that way, so they cannot change. Therefore, you should not try to change who they are. It's wrong. So now, this transgender ideology claims that you were born that way and you were born wrong. And you should change your gender to whatever you want to. Narcissism is you making your own rules of reality and everyone has else, everyone else has to accommodate your feelings. And if others don't agree with you, they're wrong and they're intolerant bigots. Are we raising children to be narcissistic? Sexual identity is given by God. It is not achieved. God's truth does not change or evolve. If you go against God's truth, there are consequences such as confusion, depression, anxiety, suicide, drug addiction, pornography, et cetera. These are, there are destructive consequences of going against the innate God-ordained truth because we were made in God's image. The heart of the problem is the problem of the heart. The Bible says our hearts are deceitful above all things. Jesus came to save us from ourselves. He can give us new hearts. He can set us free from destructive lies if we give Him our hearts. He can, only He can fill the emptiness in our hearts that was made for Him. We all want the same things for our children. We want all children to be well-adjusted, safe, healthy, to grow and learn and thrive. But children cannot thrive on lies teaching them that their gender is fluid. Transgender policies don't make students safe. It makes victims. When boys are allowed to be in girls' bathroom, there were bad things that happened. There were cases that, a lot of lawsuits filed suit because of that. And statistics shows that, you can look this up, transgender are more, most likely to be victims of, from pedophiles and from being sexually abused. Can we please get back to academics in schools? We need to be examples to our children that we make decisions not based on feelings or fear, but the truth. Now, the board first abolished Policy 5756. Then, when they came across pressure, some members on the board flipped their vote to keep it. Stand on the truth, fear God and not man, or mandates from the bi-bi-Biden's liberal federal government. The only countries that govern totally controls what children learn are from communist countries like China and Korea. Even in Russia, Putin had the common sense not to allow homosexuality indoctrination in schools. Now, Trump has called for common sense to be back in schools by not pushing the 5757 policy. Or you lose federal funding. You could fight it out in the courts. But I pray the, the board would not, would comply to this, to the President, President Trump's, you know, mandate, not just for the sake of losing money. I mean, it's not just all about money. There's principles involved, right? Money should be, should not be the motivation, but, but truth, but the truth for the next generation. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry about that. Oh, I'm sorry about that. Standard God's given truths. If truths are not worth fighting for, then there's nothing worth living for. God bless you all for all that you do for our community, for our school's community.
Thank you. Anybody else? Oh, Mr. Ross.
Mr. Ross, Edison High School, just a lawyer, and the President just wanted to ask for a point of order. If I didn't come last month, can I get 12 minutes?
No.
No, I'm just kidding. You know me, I talk fast, I'll get it done.
That is true.
I gotta take a shot. I was gonna cede my time to Mr. Romanitz, because, you know, nobody that's done more service in Edison has done more service to the country and more service to the schools than him. And I know that he's in Edison High Class of '61. You know me, I always gotta get some of this great news out. I missed last month, but, you know, I'm back. And one of the great things that we have is the long-lasting impact. You heard about Mr. Andy DeNicolle, another Edison grad. But we're having on April 5th, the very first class, the people that were the class before Mr. Romanitz, they're going to have a reunion, the 65th reunion is gonna be held at the high school. And, you know, we got some local people coming in, our students are gonna help out to serve them and give them tours. So their 65th anniversary of Edison High, the opening class where they started up, that they talked about and they went to that school. So it's fantastic to see how much they're still connected and caring. It was awesome to come here in this great new space, hear about all the different things, and to listen to the Future Eagle Orchestra that's over here from Hoover that's gonna be coming up. And I'm glad to hear that in the phases of construction, we'll start to get some work in orchestra rooms, and hopefully we'll get those classrooms following at Phase 3 so we can get those labs in. Other things I wanted to do was, the other thing about great is the orchestra and the commitment to the arts is something that we always talk about. And I know there's issues and things, but there's, you know, very few districts that have that commitment, and you know about it. Mr. Shee and everybody else that's on the Board knows those different ways that we have that commitment to our orchestra, how much they've grown here, how much they've grown in our building, how successful both bands are. It's just wonderful to see. Also wanna shout out our cheer teams that have won the state championships, not one, not two, not three, not four, not five, but six years in a row that they've come out and won. This year, they won both game day and promotion. So a big shout out to Coach Greg Warre, Coach Belisario, Coach Yocum, and we've got Coach Amberd. Shout out Certified Kitchens, great company, local company there. Now, I wanna thank out, we also, Mr. Dudek talked about, we have the two state champion for Group Four high jumpers. David Brown jumped 6'10", and Amabotang jumped 5'4". It's absolutely fantastic. But the one thing that I really wanna take the time on, and I'll go a little bit quick. Today, all of you saw up on the desk when you got in there, a little QR code about the St. Baldricks. Every year, the Edison Public Schools puts together a team. This was started way before me. I'm just the person that gets up and speaks about it. Mr. Spoor, another one of our favorite Marines and electricians. Mr. Iannici in the Edison Auto Shop, you saw Ms. Halpin talking about him. Myself, students. And we represent, we got this all started for someone who was a student in the district, but now works in the district as a secretary. And this is probably the most important thing that we can do for our children, is protect their health. And St. Baldricks is something that goes against conquering childhood cancer. By the next time you see me at the next meeting, my head will be cleanly shaved. And we do this every year. We've got students, last year, we had a student, Michael, who came in. He hadn't cut his hair since he left Hoover. And he was a senior at Edison High, and it was longer than Ms. Pang's, longer than Ms. White's hair. And he got it all cut off at that just to raise money. So I gave this to you. I know that, you know, funds are always tight, but feel free to click the QR code, donate what you can. Anybody that's outside, the QR code is out there as well. It's really a great thing. And welcome again to new Board members. Welcome back, Mr. Eriko. Welcome back, President Shee. Welcome, Mr. Patel. If you guys wanna demonstrate, you know, your full commitment, we can go get the hair done, and, you know, we'll start a team. And I'll match, you know, the donation I gave to mine. If you start, I'll match it for you, too. So again, St. Baldricks, it's about childhood cancer. It's gonna be March 22nd. You can go on, there's Edison Public Schools page. It's all the unions, it's not just me. But, you know, the best thing about Edison High and Edison Public Schools are the kids and the families. And this is about protecting them, because we all know some child that's been fighting with cancer. We know how important it is to keep that research going. Thanks as always, and we'll see you next time. Where are we at next time? Where's our next meeting?
Next time?
The next meeting in March. Is it Jams?
It's John Adams.
John Adams, alright, good. We'll see you over there at the new driving area.
So I'm surprised you didn't give a shout out to this Board and just, you know, you're getting an interior done for Edison High, right? It's on the agenda. You got a switchgear, which you're gonna take care of the load for air conditioning for your entire school, okay? And the other thing is, you have an orchestra room being done.
Yes.
I didn't hear any shout out for that. Also, there's a softball field.
Can we run the tape back?
Turf field for softball for Edison High. I need another shout out for that.
And we're gonna do one for JP Stevens, too, for Mr. Marzano, the new AD. But if we can run the tape back, I know that I said something about the wonderful Future Eagle Orchestra and how we were getting new spaces for them, but Mr. Ross always wants to wait, and I wanna make sure stuff gets bid out. And I know we've gotta go through all the bid process and all that before I say thank you. And my thanks will be extremely gracious when those things are broken ground.
Steps.
All the steps, and I know, and I know that...
You gotta walk before you work.
And I know that, you know, one of the things that's been consistent, you know, under the Board is the walking forward, and this space is an example of it. The space we'll see next month in Jams is also a space. So when we get the new spaces in Edison High, I know we can come back next September for those meetings.
You're very greedy.
Mr. Toast, would you agree with that? I'm very greedy.
Not at all.
Okay, so if we don't have any more public comments, can I have a motion to... Oh, we do have one, okay. Come.
Okay, so, just wanna start off with the bill list. So I contacted some business administrators from other districts, so I was in the back. The response that I got from the business administrators were, "Some districts posted online with the agenda, while others only provided upon request or during the meeting." So the bills list is provided by other districts, so I don't understand why Edison Public Schools can't provide it. I do think that that was ridiculous, that this was hidden in a bills list where the public was unaware of this vote. And I'm very disappointed for certain people not even to even think about it. So, the bills list can be posted, and I hope next meeting, when I request it for a third time, that I do get it on time. Let's talk about policy. Last year, we discussed vendor and Board member relations, as well as potential reforms during policy meetings. We addressed concerns regarding relationships that may be inappropriate between Board members and vendors. What is the current status with those discussions? And are there any resulting policy changes regarding vendor and Board member interactions? I do know, in the past, people have contacted vendors, and there are allegations that people may have gotten a little, let's just say a little, some gifts. The other thing I wanna talk about is, I went back to the finance minutes. I was reading the minutes from the reorganization meeting that was added to the agenda, and I re-watched the video as well. Mr. Shee, you expressed your gratitude to Congressman Josh Gottenheimer for swearing in the new Board. His support and commitment to our community's education future means a great deal to all. You know, this was something that Mrs. Conway brought up at the last meeting, too, of why we have politicians, especially from Bergen County, coming over here and making those comments. If you watched the video, he goes, "Well, you brought me here, so I gotta speak." So, you know, there's allegations, too, that he may have made donations to certain people's campaigns. But I just wanted to remind the Board that in New Jersey, the Board of Education must remain nonpartisan and focused on educational matters, avoiding any perception of political endorsement or partnership. Acknowledging a governor or candidate, a public meeting could be viewed as political favoritism or an endorsement, which is not appropriate. And finally, this Pulse thing that I read and saw. I saw the email, I actually submitted my name, and I did get an email saying that I cannot participate. I guess I wasn't one of the first 50 out of 17,000 kids that go to this district. But I do know we offer the Parent Academy, we have Board of Education meetings, we have other aspects in the buildings where we could actually engage with parents. So when I look at Pulse, I made a joke, and I said, "Basically, it's politicians undermining learning with selfish expectations." So here's my questions regarding Pulse. How equitable is this program? It was limited to the first 50 participants, yet we have student population of 17,000. Also, are all schools being represented? If it's the first 50, how do we know all 50 schools are being represented? Are all demographics included? How are we ensuring an outreach to families of lower socioeconomic backgrounds who not have access to sign up for this? Because I know there's a lot of people out there having hard times that don't have internet at home. We have a lot of people that use WhatsApp and stuff like that, which deals with the internet to get connections. So how are we dealing with these kids that wanna participate but don't have the means to sign up for it? I just think it was very unfair for the first 50, and there was no guidelines on how to actually get those 50s, those 50 participants. And other than that, I had some other funny stuff to say, but I'm gonna try to keep this down and save it for the next meeting. I did have the resolution that I wanted to read, Vishal, I wrote myself, but I'll save that for the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? See none? Can I have a motion to close public comments?
Motion closed.
Okay, Mr. Eriko, last second. Okay, Mr. Patel. Alright, so... No, all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Alright, so now, we save the best to the last. Board member comments? Any comments from Board members?
Yes.
Okay, Joe, you go ahead.
I just would like to thank you for the Edison High School, the switchgears. We worked on that for a long time. It's finally gonna be done. And when the switchgears become a reality, which it's a big job, the switchgears will make it possible for us to add on to the air conditioning. It's not the switchgears and the air conditioning, it's the switchgears first, and then the air conditioning. So I don't wanna make, I don't want people to be confused. The switchgears give us the electric, and then we can move forward. The other issue is, when you bond something... When you bond something, it's a project you put all together, but I wanna make sure if we're gonna bond it, that what we're bonding is gonna last us for the life of the bond. So if we're bonding for 10 classrooms, it depends how long the bond's gonna be. The other issue is, if we have a referendum, don't get scared, but if we have a referendum, it's a 60-40 split, I believe. And that 60-40 split is a lot better than bonding by yourself. So I just want people to understand that, yes, it is your tax dollars, but if you do a referendum, the amount of money you get back from the state. Now, what I'm saying is that this, if we need 20 classrooms at Edison High, or 30 classrooms at John Marshall, or at least the minimum of 10 classrooms at Lindenel, Martin Luther King, Franklin School. At Franklin School, we have a problem because the switchgears aren't big enough, and we can't get the electric from PSE&amp;G. So when we put a project together, the public has to know. They have to know the difference between a referendum, a land lease, a pilot, payment in lieu of taxes, a TIF, tax increment financing. So I want to make sure that the public understands and the communications of that. The community has to know why. And the other end, it's really a big thing, but... Okay, that's good. What you really have to know is that I only have two kids left in my school, and why should I have to pay taxes? It's a process. It's a growing, we're growing. I just want yous to understand, when we put something together, there's a lot of people that are behind us that do things to make it right. So I understand bonding, but I also understand tax increment financing. I understand pilots, PAC pilots, payment in lieu of taxes. But a referendum, that's the bad word. But a referendum, you get 40% back. So if you're gonna do it, if you wanna do it, you wanna talk about it. We need $147 million to put air conditioning in all of our schools. That's a fact. If you wanna put all the additions on, you're talking probably in under $120, $130 million. A referendum is the way to go, because you get money back. But it costs you money. If we put a referendum together for a high school, the students that are in elementary school will benefit for it. The students in the high school will not benefit from it. It won't happen. By the time they get to high school, they'll be gone. So when we talk about expansion, I want everybody to understand what expansion is. If we expand, we must plan for it. We must plan for the future. The future is your kids, your kids' kids. To be perfectly honest, that's the only way I can talk about it, the only way I can even think about it. My problem is simple. How do I get you to vote on a plan that puts everything together, and I can give you a timeline of 10 years? Because that's what it's gonna take. It's gonna take, what, right now, JP Stevens, probably a little less than 36 months. So understand, it takes time. We have to expand. Our teachers, you're right, our teachers, we have a problem. They're the best. Look at the way we are progressing. That happens because of our teachers, our curriculum people. We have to shout out to them. We have to shout out to the people that buff the floors, empty the garbage cans. We have a big operation going here. And to be perfectly honest, we have to think big. So you're probably not gonna hear me much longer, but I will tell you that I will fight tooth and nail for expansion, for our students. And I just can't put air conditioning in every school, because if everybody thinks that, if everybody says that, that's not gonna happen unless you take it out of your pocket. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you for the time.
Vishal? Yep. So I have a few questions and concerns I guess raised by some students and parents for Dr. O'Drally. So earlier today, Ms. Nicole Halpin presented the strategic plan, and one of the topics was increasing student engagement. So I have three issues I wanna talk to you about and see how we can solve it together. The first thing is, some teachers do not teach in a class. One example, two examples, in fact, where a teacher gave a packet to the students and say, "Go study and pretend I'm not in a class." In another example, teacher played a video of something and did not engage the student for the entire class, just, you know, self-learning. for the entire class, just, you know, self-learning. Second issue I want to brought it to your attention is teachers not giving back the test. One of the teacher even went to the extent of telling students and parents, saying there is a district policy that they're not supposed to return the major assessments back. How do students learn if they don't know where they're making mistakes? We as a unit will learn from our mistakes. They need to know where they're making mistakes, and need to know right away, within a certain period of time. And third thing I want to talk to you about is communication. What can we do to improve communication between teachers and parents? I think I shared some example of, one of the teacher who sent series of emails to the parents, informing them, you know, very first day of the class, to level set the expectation on how she runs the class, what she does in a class, what she expects from the parents to do it at home. You know, one example that she stated was, "I don't check my homework." Right or wrong, you can give it all you want, but then she levels set that expectation upfront with the parents. Right? When you set the right expectation, you build the trust, and, and that's how the relationship and student and parent both engagement increasing. Another thing she does is, on a weekly basis, she sends out an email saying, "This is what I taught last week, this is what I'm going to teach next week, these are quizzes I took last week, these are the quizzes I'm going to take next week," and she publishes class averages of the classes. I think it, it just builds the trust among the teachers and parent. And, and I'd like to work with you to see how we can, you know, solve this, you know, issues. So let me pause and give you an opportunity to respond.
Great.
No, thank you, Mr. Patel. Yeah, so let me just begin with student engagement, yes. So, you know, the, the issue that you represented just right now, in isolation, you know, the use of packets for instructional purposes, I mean, they all do have a relevant purpose, you know? Hopefully, there was some form of feedback at that time, or connection to a larger context. What I, what I always encourage parents to, and their students also, if, if you have questions about the learning experiences that are going on in the classroom, first point of contact should always be the classroom teacher, right? If there's, if there's not satisfaction with the answer that's being provided, right? We have our supervisors, we have our building level principals. I'm confident that our teachers are able to kind of justify some of those pieces at that time, but there's always room for improvement, right? Communication, I've been on that correspondence where you've commended teachers for their level of communication and setting clear expectations. I can tell you that setting objectives, having students speak intelligently about those objectives is the hallmark of great teaching. That's a practice that we implore, and it's also part of our evaluation model too. So if it's not taking place on a regular basis, building level administration will provide feedback in relationship to that, and it will be noted in the evaluation model. It's funny that you mentioned the, the assessments, and the, I guess, the practice of not giving the test back. I think that that's a practice that's been here in Edison for quite some time. I don't think it's uncommon to, to other districts as well too, but I do understand what you're saying, right? How can I improve my instructional practice if I don't know what I'm doing wrong, right? So we've got the edge of the sword here, where we have routine benchmark assessments, right, that are coveted, and we want to make sure that we provide the integrity with those, but also at the same time, strike the fine balance by ensuring that we're having great conversations with kids about the areas that they need improvement on, right? And how to get that better, and provide reinforcement in relationship to that. You bring up three really good points. I've got a talented staff that work on curriculum here, and, and great teachers that are willing to try new things, and confident we can get everything to the finish line.
So, so thank you for the response, and I want to clarify that I'm not singling, I mean, I'm not seeing all the teachers do that, right?
Yeah, sure.
And, and goal is some do, and because of that, some teachers, it breaks the trust, right? And yes, it's a good idea to rely on our parents, but I like administration to do something about, to intervene it, right? To identify those people and take some actions to correct the course, right? On, on a second point, on the, on the test exam, I mean, I know, maybe it's a common practice, I get it, but then now, we are not competing with everyone, you know, everybody else in New Jersey or states, we are competing with internationally, and, and we always want to try to find better ways to do it. I know Mr. Rick Cohen has some ideas to leverage AI. I know it's going to take time to educate teachers to leverage AI to maybe generate more tests, but I would like you to make this a priority this year, and see how we can implement something like this. Maybe start with one subject, and, and pilot it, and see how we can adapt it going forward. And, and on communication, I think, again, I, I want you and Mr. Rick Cohen to maybe use that as an, as an example, and make it a practice across the district. I know for sure that not all the teachers communicate like that. I have two kids in a district, and it's the first time some teacher communicated to me as a parent like that. I have never met her, I don't know what she does, but the way she communicates, she earned my trust. So, thank you.
Mr. Shee, one of the, the library, I didn't get to my, give a report, the Edison, the North Edison Library will be closing in a week and a half. It will be remodeled, construction, we had a groundbreaking the other day. The new, the new temporary library will be on Oak Tree Road, across from the Edison Family Restaurant. The project's expected to be about 15 months. Walls are taken down, there's foundations, foundations that have to be moved, and they're expanding another 4,000 square feet of space. That is a big project, and that should be, like I said, within a couple of weeks. Number two, Mr., Dr. Redd, how many students, bad problem here, I know, how many students are being taught in hallways?
In hallways?
Yeah. Yeah. How many classrooms that we don't have, that we have students being taught on carts?
Zero.
Go right ahead.
Yes. We don't, currently, right now, the only time a student would be in the hallway is when their teacher has activities that take them outside there. But all instructions taken place in classrooms.
So everything that, okay.
Yes.
Like there was a big problem we had at a school, there was a lot of-
Yep.
Okay, but that's all done.
All taken care of.
Okay. Referendum, my friend. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All right, so, you know, I, I actually got a couple phone calls from residents about some of the discrepancies about the classrooms, I would say, at the library board. So for JMI, we have nine classrooms, it's coming up, we have nine classrooms, two flexible classrooms, which is a little bit bigger, and three SGI, and we have a cafeteria. For the John Marshall School, we have 22 classrooms, we have one music room, four SGI, three teacher workroom, and three teacher lounges, and one cafeteria with stage, and we have a server. So those are the, the correct numbers for the classrooms. There's something else I want to talk about, is that today, you saw on the agenda, the board approved a, a resolution to work with the township to condemn the 401 Division Street. So this is the first step, that the, the school board and township working together. I'd like to see more continuation on that. So actually, last year, after I won the election, I contacted the mayor to say, hey, we need to work together. And I met him one-on-one in December. So then we had to, you know, just to run some ideas by him, whether he is, you know, open to some of the, the stuff that we have been talking about, and he was very open to that. That's why we had a meeting last week on the, on the 19th, with his administration, me, Vishal, Dr. Oderelli, and John Toast. So we had a very productive meeting. The topics we discussed were shared services. We talked about the Woodrow Wilson Sports Field, which, you know, we will go ahead and, and do the sports field and redo it, because it's in bad shape, and, and, you know, Jerry, you can, you can attest to that. And the, the baseball, it's not in the right direction, and the new gym is, you know, taking up some of the soccer field space. So we're going to redo this thing. And if people remember last, last year, the township was passed a, was put a resolution on their agenda to contribute $65,000 to help with the Woodrow Wilson. At that time, we were building the gym, so we told them to put it on the, to table it. So they're willing to put it back, and it's a collaboration between the township and, and the school district. The other item we talked is the pilot program. A lot of the towns, especially Woodbridge, they're doing pilot. So, you know, there's still some, we don't have a lot of bigger projects, so we'll continue to work on that. And the third item we talked is Town Agent Coolidge. There were different ideas that's thrown around, and so we're going to have a follow-up meeting on that. So if you remember that, you know, mayor has mentioned a couple times in his data of the township address, that he was going to give that property to us. So we're going to have more follow-up discussions, and hopefully we'll have something that's solid about that property. It's, it's a great location, we have multiple use for that, and we're looking for collaboration with the township. So again, you know, I see Brian's here. You mentioned about the, the bill that, for Vishal. I just want to very, just be very transparent, it's $3,500. $3,500. Okay? So assume that Vishal is wrong, it's a business decision just to pay that bill, $3,500, okay? So Vishal is actually right. When a board have a meeting to pass a resolution, to have a hearing about him, he is entitled to legal representation. So I'm going to actually ask public to Oprah the email on March 18th through to March 20th, between Vishal and board leadership, okay? You read that email, and you tell me what happened, because he is entitled to legal service, he was denied legal service. So he needs to have representative to represent him. That's his right. But the board, the board leadership say, "No, you can't have this." So who is wrong? It's the board leadership. If they allowed him go talk to the, the district attorney, it's a non-issue. So you did it wrong, okay? Of not allowing him to have legal representation. He is entitled to it. So that's what the bill is. It's not his personal bill. You want to talk about the bill, let's talk about the bills. We have board member yell at the teacher for no reason. That bill is $6,480.50. Brian, you want, you want that bill, go Oprah that bill, okay? We have other board members who racked up illegal, just for, for different things, $22,128.01. No, it's not a back and forth. No, 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 you don't have comments, public comments is over. You can come, you can come back next time, okay? You, you are criticizing about the bill list. The bill list, how we do it, is exactly the same when you were sitting here. Last year, it was just like this, okay? No, no, I, I, there's no back and forth between you, you and me, okay? You had your chance, you had your chance. So you are the most, biggest hypocrite, okay? You were sitting here, everything, everything was just like that. I'm sorry? Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, thanks. You, I'm all order? Okay. Sir, please. The, the bill list was treated exactly the same way that you were here. So you say nothing when you were here, but when you were there, you started, you started accusing the, the board of not being transparent. No, Brian, I have the floor, I have the floor, okay? Okay? You were the board member, you were the board member, you sat here, you were board member, you were the board member. Stop, stop. Brian, can you, can you tell them to, to be quiet? So with that said, I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have a model?
Do we have a second?
There's another lady.
Huh? The resolution is approved. You're talking about Dean's, Dean's resolution? It was approved. No, it's already approved. I'm sorry.
Listen to people, listen, come to him.
All right. Oh, can I have a, all in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Okay, aye, okay, thank you.